Ready to go?
Meeting call to order. Today is February 7.
Yes.
It's now 6:03 PM. Town Council meeting in town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. Jay, we would just send the prayer.
I'm just gonna ask you to take a moment of silence and come up with a better prayer next time. Thank you.
Do you want to pledge a lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilman Lachardi.
Yeah.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Councilman Borje.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Forum is declared. Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the January 17th, 2023, regular town council meeting and cancellation of taxes in the amount of $53,310.64 as requested by the tax assessor.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I just have a question. What are the Waterford Towers? They're on there three different times.
Under cancellation?
Under the cancellation of tax, I'm sorry.
And where are those apartments? Are they Quaker Lane? Actually, I have the same question.
It's just over $30,000, so it's like.
So these are probably the last of the appeals for the real estate or the whatever assessment review.
Okay.
Waterford Towers. I'm gonna have to recuse myself. For the record, I'm gonna recuse myself on this, man.
Yeah, so I still don't, I looked that up and that's what I saw. I'm still not sure where they are. I don't know. Mark, are you familiar with it?
I recall being dispatched to them, but which actual building it is, I'm not sure. I think it's the A-frame one that starts it and then rotates that.
Mr. Secoshia, no.
There he is.
We still have a better one coming, but it'll work for now.
Waterford Towers.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's quite a bit of money. The reason for the abatement, I mean, there are three different. Sorry, Sal. Nothing like grabbing you when you come in, right?
No. That was the board's decision that they made. And the income and expense that we had was the standard, because they had not turned in originally the numbers. The numbers they turned in justified that. And it's three different buildings, not just one big.
Right.
That's why there's three different spots here.
Yeah, a couple of them were smaller and another one, but they had, I think, like a class, like a Class B apartment. They're not Class B apartments.
I would.
Over there, so they had to make the adjustments for that.
Okay.
Okay. Sal, in general, and I know this comes before us all the time, if somebody applies for this to turn an abatement, they really obviously get approved or denied. Is there reasoning behind that?
Through the board of review, there is no denial. Comes before the board.
Yeah.
You discuss it, but it said you shall make the change on the, when it goes to the board.
Okay.
If it's just in front of the office, then you have a choice of not accepting that change.
Okay.
That's, 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 it's like that in every town.
So no matter what, if you make it to the board, you get, you get your relief?
If the board decides.
Oh, you just said they shall.
If the board decides, yes, but it comes to you for a vote, because you control the purse strings of the town. But the ordinance says that you'll pass the board's decision.
So the board makes a decision and we're the ones that give the stamp of approval?
It's, it's, and it's like that in every town.
So what if somebody goes to the board and they get denied? It doesn't, obviously won't come to us.
Correct.
Will they get a reason why they're denied?
Usually they don't, they don't have enough information for the board to give any relief to out of denial.
Okay.
Their presumptions might be incorrect. You know, the board will say, oh, they said, you know, they compared it to this, this in this house. And well, you know, he's got a colonial and they're comparing him to ranches type of thing, so.
So we shall approve this.
When I was, when I was in Princeton, they actually, the town took the board to court twice in my 40 years there, and the town lost. It's the, I wanna say it's to take the politics out of it. But that's why we're supposed to have knowledgeable people on that appeal board to make a decision and not just, you know, some, you know, a friend of the friend.
Oh, that's a good.
Yeah. Yes.
But, you know, we wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't, if I felt bad enough about it that it was incorrect, it's only for one year. If, if I felt like it should be where it was originally, I could put that value back where it was for the upcoming year, forcing them to go to the appeal board again. But that usually, that doesn't happen too often.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you're sorry, you have to recuse yourself. And it is a resolution, so. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries and for the record.
Question on this, because this is all new.
Before we, before we do this, I'm sorry, just because you were too quick. Could I make a motion that we move the school department? Not that they wouldn't love to sit here all night with us. It's J1. Could we move them to the front of the line, please? I'm sorry.
It's all right. I just have a question on this while it's fresh.
Yep.
So we have to say yes to this. If we said no tonight. So if I said no, I don't, I don't wanna do the abatement. Do I have to give a reason?
I'm probably gonna call you later on.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not understanding. It just seems like we're in a box right now to say we have to say yes.
Yeah, cuz, cuz the word shall that you throw out there is really throwing me, so, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
That would be great. Shall.
Was that a motion, Mary Beth, to move?
Yes, that was a motion to move item J1.
I'll second.
Next item.
Move a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it.
J1, consideration of the school department's stage two capital improvement.
Uh, yes. Second.
Move a second?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. So we're here tonight to seek approval for stage two of our five-year capital improvement plan. It's part of the necessity of school construction process. We've already passed stage one approval process with RIDE, which is identify our team, our letter of intent to RIDE, and SBA, stage one preliminary approval. So now it brings us to stage two. So tonight we seek approval for our five-year plan, which has a total of 21 projects. And each school, each one of the six schools is impacted in some way or another in the plan. We also wanted to just point out that since FY17, there's been a long list of capital improvement projects that have taken place to the tune of $5.5 million. And that was done without any additional requests for funding from the town. If you remember way back in 2015, when we realized our first surplus, we committed to the town that we would put that in our capital improvement plan to use as a revolving fund for the capital improvements when they came up, so that we didn't have to go back to the town for more funding or bonding. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. And the five-year plan that we present tonight does not include any additional funding from the town. So with that, I'll ask Joe Spagna to come up and talk about a little bit about the funding sources.
Good evening. Thank you for moving us forward. I appreciate that.
You're welcome to stay, but I guess, yeah.
Maybe I'll stay. So the new plan in Kenny Towns, I could speak to some of the specific projects of it, is just under $12 million. The last time that we've done a plan or a project of any scope and size even close to this, it wasn't even close. It was $4 million for, the fire code renovation was back in 2014, and that one was bonded by the town. This one with the funding sources, we're gonna be using facility equity initiative funds if approved. That's about $9 million of the, of the projects that we have. Those, that funding is pay as you go, so we get reimbursement based on our percentage of housing aid and bonuses in the same year. So technically, we could actually send the invoices to the state and they would pay the vendor, but we don't operate that way. We wanna make sure they get paid right away. The second source of funding is just a typical standard housing aid that we use, based on our reimbursement rate of 64% on average right now, not including any bonuses. We could have calculated bonuses in there, but I wanted to do worst case scenario if we didn't get the bonus. So using that, those two funding sources, we should be able to accomplish all these projects. The only requirement from RIDE is if, if we're not awarded the fund, the facility equity initiative portion, it all becomes housing aid, and we are required to at least do 50% of what we're requesting in order to maintain the housing aid reimbursement. And we are prepared to even do that in case we're not awarded everything for the facilities equity initiative too, so. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
I just have one, probably gonna be a stupid question, but because of my ignorance, I'm gonna ask it anyway. Why do you need the town's approval if it's not costing you?
I've asked that, because it doesn't run through the town right now, but it's requirement.
Okay, I just wanna say if you're not asking money for us and.
We do own the buildings, though, yeah.
And they want.
Yes.
And they wanna know that you're involved and that you're okay with what we're doing to the buildings.
Okay.
Is it, so, so they will approve this or say yes or no? How will that work? What's the process?
Submit the facility equity initiative with our five-year plan, right? And that's a separate approval that'll happen. They'll either say yea or nay to our project. There's a certain pool of money. I forget what the total is for the state for this round. It's allocated out to many of the districts who are applying. We may get all of it. We may get none of it. We may get some of it. We've put in million-dollar requests and came back with $400,000. So we'll take whatever they give us, obviously. The housing aid, though, is pretty, pretty standard. I think it's in May. Am I correct in that? April?
See, isn't that on your agenda for tomorrow night? Yes, just in case you think I didn't look at it, all right? So suppose you, five years is a long time. Can you change them in and out? I mean, we have something for, for FY20. We have a million dollars for the convert the library at Daring Middle School. Suppose we need to do something else besides that. Is that allowed or?
Within the, within the projects. If there's something outside the project, we have to go for approval with RIDE. Like, an emergency happens, a boiler blows, and we need to get that done. I think we can get emergency approval on projects like that, but we try to stay within the scope of what they approved.
And if you decided that the John F. Daring Library had to be done a little quicker?
Oh, definitely can do it faster. They, they like it when we use up that five-year plan as fast as possible. It gets a new five-year plan for them to look at.
So you'll basically get disallotment of money and can spend it when and where, if you get the whole thing, when and wherever you want within.
Within those projects, funding those projects, yeah.
So I know you have this down by school.
Yes.
Um, are you gonna be doing this by school? Because they're all different.
I will defer to Mr. Downey.
The priorities.
Fiscal years on.
And they have fiscal years too.
Sorry.
Priority ones.
Sorry, sorry.
Just a reminder about the facility equity money. Those were one of nine districts in the state that was disproportionately affected by COVID. So only nine districts eligible for this funding. So, and that's the library project, including the innovative classroom in Daring now that we have. You know, it's, it needs to be an innovative project, in other words, to clarify that for some.
For your roof. Yeah, okay.
And we were just awarded for Horgan, the media center, $572,000 through the facility equity initiative.
Awesome.
That's not, it's, it's in here as far as cash flow goes, but it's not part of what we're requesting at this point in time.
And did we accomplish everything that was on our last five-year plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Kenny doesn't stop.
Apparently wisely, because, no, they've done a great job. It is, the whole, the whole department's cool and that. You guys have done a great job with this. Any other questions for Joe? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nice to have it.
Thank, thank you. Have a good evening.
So nobody's gonna stay, really?
All right, ordinances. Second reading of ordinance 2023-1, amending sections 24 and 25 of the West Warwick zoning code.
Move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
That's an ordinance to bring our zoning code in line with the statute that was passed by the General Assembly. When I was here presenting the first reading, I had not changed the original language of mayor to town council. It led to some confusion, so that's why it's amended. That change has been made, but basically just brings us in compliance with how the council appoints the zoning board and reduces the, the previous law said that for a zoning board to meet, there had to be five people there. We had a situation in December where we only had four members, so the applicant had to go away until January. Now that says we can operate with four members if we don't get, if we don't have a five-person quorum. That's the change that's been made.
Any questions, Pharrell?
I actually agree with those changes.
Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2023-2, amending chapter 9C, medical marijuana grow facilities, section two definitions, and three DE, building requirements, cooperative cultivations.
Move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
This, this, when they state passed the Cannabis Act, they did some amending to the regulations for cooperative cultivators. The cooperative cultivators that exist today exist. No more licenses are going to be issued. These are going to be phased out, so this ordinance is in effect until we don't have any more, but it's in compliance with the state statute.
Al, can I ask you a question? I know when this got first brought to us, I don't know, four or five years ago, there were places in town that grew marijuana, and we.
Let me show you. This is medical marijuana.
Okay. So I'm not a pot guy, okay? Don't smoke it, don't like to smell it. I really, it's just kinda got brought to us. And in the past, when you asked where are these places operating, we couldn't know anything. Because now it's, it's legal, do they have to come before us, just like the liquor store, the gas station, the painter, for a business license for us to approve?
Are you talking about retail cannabis or medical marijuana?
Say both.
You can't talk about, medical marijuana is still secret.
Okay.
Cannabis, I don't know, because they're gonna create a commission, and that commission is gonna say what's, what's to go on. And at the, when I presented the act last time, an ordinance for the cannabis grow, and as I explained, that I presented it because we already had a couple of applications that we couldn't do anything with, because the state hasn't set the rules up yet. And Mary Beth pointed out that we were probably putting the cart before the horses, because we don't know where the state's going. We can't approve the cannabis licenses yet, so we, that was tabled. It's a whole different ballgame that I can't answer your question.
Okay.
They haven't decided.
So medical, the medical marijuana that's out there, the places, how many, I don't even know. I don't know how, how many we have in West Warwick.
I don't know.
I think there might be three. Is there three now?
There's three now. I think there's a lot more than three.
There's not a lot more, there's not a lot more than three.
There was a lot of grows in West Warwick.
So.
There was never more than five.
Again, hold on, guys. Just to clarify, we, we don't see those applications, so realistically, what I don't really know about where they are. You might have walked in one or done a tour of one.
Or a completion residence with them.
Or whatever it may be, but again, you know, realistically, I think police, fire.
Police, fire, building. They do their inspections. I mean, so it's no.
So they know where they are.
They know, they know where they are, and once everything is approved, the file gets sealed. And that's, that's it. It's sealed. The tax collector, the tax assessor questioned me on it. I said, you can't see it. That's, that's the law.
So this medical marijuana, because they don't put like penicillin in it or anything, it's just marijuana. This is for cooperatives only, so if you're a solo person, they don't have to go through all the business licensing.
These are, we have a group of people that are called cooperative cultivators that there's a, they, they, I think it's can only be two people. They're growing it for themselves and somebody else, and it's a very limited number that are going to be phased out. And they just put these regulations in to guide them to the end.
And when is the end?
What I've given you is verbatim from the statute.
When is the end? Do we know? Is it after the commission's formed?
They're being phased out, and I don't know the. What you have is, you know, even if you don't pass it, it's our law anyway. I just wanna have our ordinance not reading differently than the state statute. So somebody says, comes in and says, this is what your ordinance says. And then the building or whoever says, well, I'm sorry, but that's not what the state statute says. I just want the two to be the same. That's the only reason I brought that before you.
Any other comments I had on this? I'll wait until the other one comes down, because he keeps flipping it to the medical marijuana, and to me, marijuana is marijuana.
There's two separate statutes.
I understand that, but there's only one marijuana. So that's my point. But I'll save my other arguments that, you know, this is such a great thing for the state of Rhode Island. I'll argue my against that when the other statute comes.
The other one could be a long time away, it seems like. I mean, they haven't even formed their commission yet, right? I mean, so I think it could be a ways.
Yeah. We're gonna have to pass it, so we can do nothing with it. Any other questions, Pharrell? Any public comment on this ordinance?
I just want clarification on building requirements. Derek, 6200.
What?
It says here, building requirements.
Yeah.
Is there clarification on that for the ordinance? What does that mean? Building requirements?
Well, that's, that's in the ordinance.
Yeah.
What the building requirements are.
It's.
Yeah, but we're talking about the ordinance. I just wanna understand what the building requirements are.
Section 41.
It's section 9C-3 of the ordinance, and that's just.
No more than one registered cardholder shall be permitted to grow marijuana in a dwelling unit or commercial unit except for two or more qualifying patient or primary caregivers, cardholders, who are primary residents of the same dwelling unit where the medical marijuana plants are grown. And in all instances, subject to the plant limits provided in section six above. So there's plant limits, there's all sorts.
So in this ordinance.
It's actually probably restricted by the state.
No, I just asked in special why we're talking about the ordinance. So in this ordinance, when it says growing in a building, does it have to be the building, or can it be individual parts of the building?
No, it's limited to the individual units.
Okay, you can only have two per building. Even if there's 100 units, you can't have. No, no more than one pot hole, so. Well, you can't have two different businesses. For cooperative, it's two people, right? Yeah, for the cooperative, but yeah, the, the units are.
Because when you say building, you know, the whole building, and then you got rental units.
Units, based off of units.
I've been listening to this in other communities where they're putting in place that if it's, let's just say, 100-foot-long building, it's five units. They can't grow in the units. They can grow in the whole building.
That may be under the Cannabis Act.
Which is different than medical marijuana.
Yes, two separate acts. Derek, on the front, first page, under D, number three, it says, no location may have more than one cooperative cultivation. The purpose of this section of location means one structural building, not units within the structural building.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's one structural business, building, not individual units.
No, not, but, all right.
Any other questions, Pharrell? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jason?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2023-4, amending sections 3.33, gas station, and section 3.71, service station, and deleting chapter 10, section 63, and adding chapter 10, article 1X.
Move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
The town manager had a meeting several weeks ago regarding a couple of filling stations and what's going on. The end result of the meeting was to see what was going on. When I looked into it, we had a situation where the ordinance provided for the license of filling stations. However, the ordinance never created any filling stations. It created gas stations and service stations. So we were licensing filling stations that had no regulations to them, and we weren't licensing gas stations and service stations that were defined in what they were. What I am proposing to you is that you repeal the ordinance that allows the licensing of filling stations, and you create an ordinance that establishes gas stations and service stations. The basic difference between the two is that a gas station is there to sell gas and to have a retail service station. Like, yeah, the service station is primarily their service cars. It's allowed to sell gas as a secondary, and we've also put in that it's allowed to have retail for non-automotive stuff, so that the two are on the same footing. One is there primarily to do repairs, the other is there to do, sell gas. The biggest change that this will cause is we have some situations where the the number of vehicles on the property is overwhelming. Our ordinance prior to, and I've just taken the ordinance, haven't changed the language. This was the ordinance that was there before I, I put them together, so that service stations, other than the vehicles that were in the bays being worked on, could have no more than six vehicles that are waiting for parts or waiting to be picked up. This will cure the present problem, or hopefully start to cure the present problem we have. I think there's, I wanna say 12, I'm somewhere in. We have two that will come in for service stations, and the rest will come in for gas stations. It will create, so that Sarah and Paula will know what they're licensing, what the business is. The police, the fire, and whoever else will know what they're authorized to do. So it's a matter of clarifying a, our statutes, that, just putting, in my opinion, putting the right categories in.
So when you say it's gonna start to fix the problem, the problem being more than six vehicles on a property that are waiting for parts? How does it, how does it fix the problem? Does it allow for more than six now?
No, they, 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 they can only have six vehicles on the property that are not actually in being repaired.
Okay. But if they are being repaired and we're waiting for parts in a time where we go keep running.
That's six, no.
And but we're running, we're at a time right now, we keep running into, like, my daughter's car, the guy had it for six months before the part came in. And he had numerous other vehicles that it was six months, you know, waiting because of the chain supply, because of the way our federal government. It was six months, you know, waiting because of the chain supply, because of the way our federal government has screwed everything up.
Well. The the they can't. He can't have. If if he's good.
You don't like government, do you? I don't like overreaching government.
If 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 your daughter's car needs a pot. He can have up to six people needing pots. If he's got seven. He said, you what? Bring it in when I get the pot.
But if it's not a movable veh- vehicle, most of the time that's why it's there. It's because there's something wrong that's where it can't be moved.
Oh.
And I will.
So my question now would be on, you said on the property. So for instance, I know we have. One that's on the border of two towns. And. He doesn't have six cars on his property, but he has it on another town.
Well, we can't.
Down the street, so.
We can't have.
It's not on his property. So if he had ten cars on the street.
Well, then if it's on another piece of property. Then he's got to. Then he's got to come in. To get approval for whatever that. Operation is on that other piece of property.
But again, so we've run in and again. The business that I've seen, that I've gotten complaints on over the years. Businesses in West Warwick. But the cars are parked in Coventry. Coventry police get notified. And Coventry police come out and say, okay, they're registered. They're on the street. Have a good day.
Yeah, but we can't do anything.
I want to just.
Yeah, I mean.
Clarify like.
If it's in Coventry, we nothing we can do about it.
I think.
Yep. My concern was, and this came up because of of complaints. Um, we won't get into the the specific business, but. Obviously, six cars is in the ordinance as it stands now. I don't know if that, what year that was done, but. It may have been in a time where. Um, vehicles weren't as prevalent as they are today. I'm concerned that six cars might be artificially low. I I don't have a suggestion on how to. Propose the right amount. Um. But. Something we need to have some teeth in order to enforce. So. Properties aren't just overwhelmed, become used car lots or abandon unregistered vehicles. We need, we need to have some enforcement powers. With the within the code and and building and zoning to to help. Make places be presentable and safe.
And. Going back to that. Question then. When you say. Being worked on. So for instance. They are waiting for parts or whatever, and they and they're not going to stop business. They're going to. Keep going, right? Now. That's a. Mechanic shop slash what filling?
It's a service station.
Service station. So. At that point. They're servicing cars. But what happens if they start selling cars off that lot also?
That's that's then they're violating their license. They don't have a sales license.
But what if they have all that? What what if I? What I'm saying is, what if they have a sales license? They have a filling. This is all state regulated. This isn't town regulated licenses. Um, so my question would be. What is the right of the business owner? What's the right of the town? And I and I understand, I I don't want to see. Like. Lots full and full cars and not moving and just sitting there and looks like a junkyard on the main street.
As to your question about the sales. And and the service. We met today. And. Got to be gentle. Our licensing. Process. Has some real problems to it. So we had a meeting today with Mary Beth and Sarah and Paula and myself. And I am going to undertake a task. To try and straighten out our. Licensing. Setup, and this will address what you're talking about right now. Kind of off the subject of the ordinance. But as you remember, David, a number of years ago. There was a concern. On the council about businesses. Coming into town. And not paying any tax or anything else. In addition, at that. Hearing. Uh, someone from the fire department came and they raised the issue. Of somebody could have. Be running a. Paint business out of his garage. The fire starts. We don't know there's a paint business in there. We don't know there's combustible liquid. We don't know there's toxic toxic stuff. So we want to know. What's going on in there? Well, at that point in time. We passed an ordinance and. I'll take the blame for it. It was. Really give it the forethought that. If you come into this town. You got to get a license or a registration. Well, I've used the example in. In our meeting today that. If, and I'm just picking it out, if. If you're going to come into Onyx. And you're going to operate. A beauty salon, well, that. That's something where you're dealing with a customer could be welfare. And yes, we want to know. What you're doing. I use the example of a card shop because I happen to represent one. If you come into us, well. And you're going to sell baseball cards. It's a little different than a card shop. So do you need all of the? Detail of getting a license? Or just come in and say, look. The fire department went in, the building official went in. The building's in good shape. I'll sell baseball cards. No, we'll give you a permit. So the end result of this meeting today. And it's strictly in the thinking process and. Is that maybe we can sit. Set up. An ordinance that says. If you're a category A, which may be. A state regulated thing. This is what you're going to do. If you're a category category B. Which is a different type. This is what you go. You need this kind of license. Category C. And then I'm working on. Looking at the businesses we presently have. We got all kinds of lists of them. And putting them into a category A. A category B or category C. I come in with a new business that has never been in this town. I come to the council, the council, instead of going through all the problem. Of an ordinance. Passes a. Resolution that says, okay. You're a category C. Now Paula and Sarah know what to do. I know what to do. So it's a matter of. This this ordinance I'm presenting tonight. Is a very short range. To try and take care of something that's going on now. But I can tell you that we're looking down the road. At a lot more detail.
I just don't want to put people out of business because you're looking at.
We don't either.
When I. Just coming in today, I came up Coeyset Avenue. The gas station slash. Service station. Is it's Baco. Guy does excellent business. He's been there forever.
Yeah.
That guy just. I think three bays. If you have. Oil changes scheduled. One after another, after another, that don't take that long, but the customer has to drop the car. You have three that go in for an oil change, three come out and they're in the lot. You have two in for service. You have other cars making appointments.
I I.
All you're doing is is you're taking this guy's business. Who has a good business and eliminating him, and I don't think that's right.
What the ordinance is is. It's pointing to. Is not what you're saying where. I come in and I got to wait a half hour. I got to wait an hour. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about I come in. And my car sits there. For three weeks, four weeks.
Is there a difference between? A registered car that's legitimately waiting for a part? As opposed to like a car that's just junk there? I mean, there should be some different. I mean, there's.
Well, that's. It it would be.
Say if you have like ten cars that are just that are unregistered as opposed to there's ten customers that are waiting. For parts. I I don't know. I just feel like.
What what the ordinance says. Is you can only have, and I I don't. I don't have any problem what Mark raised. And I just use the number six. Because that was what was there.
I just think that there's a, I just think there's a difference between the two kinds of cars and what's there and what.
Uh, you can't have unregistered.
Yeah, you can't have unregistered at all.
Can't have unregistered.
Okay, okay.
To have registered and you have a registered car that sits there for six months or twelve months or eighteen months.
Uh, well, I mean, there's exceptions. My my car was in the shop. The registration passed while it was there. You couldn't get it registered because you couldn't get it inspected until it happened. So there are exceptions.
There's a lengthy process to all this. I mean. If if I bought a car from Dave Gosden. Knowing it needed work. And I can't do it. I bring it to a a service station. And the guy says, all right, you need all this work done. It's going to cost you this amount of money. And. We have four out of the five parts. This part, good luck. You're waiting a couple of months. And probably a couple of months after that, they have to do it. So. That's one car. And then you're not talking about all the the revolving work that has that's getting done everywhere else.
My my only suggestion would be to. Increase the number to six. But I I, you know, I just think. That's good, that that we've got to attack the problem. That exists today.
Yeah, the number is weird because. Because each place is a different size too.
If you have three bays, it's six, right? If you have one bay, it's six, right?
The size of a business, or how much the parking is, or I mean. I I think it's. It's it varies from business to business. I don't know. I just feel like, and I know you just you came up with the six was the number that was.
No, six was in the ordinance already.
That was already there, and I and as Mike said, I have no idea.
When it came.
When that ordinance was.
I just feel like it's an arbitrary number where.
So back to my original question, how does this? Start fixing the process? I don't see how.
By limiting. The 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 problem arose. By complaints. For places that. That just they were. Isors and. Parking problems for the neighbors. And cars, there were too many to fit in the lot. They ended up being parked. On the street. And so it's. It's a matter of just try to. Limit that number that he could. That could be on the property.
But as we just said, no, limit of six is already below. Um, you just agreed with that yourself. We already know we can't have unregistered vehicles on on these properties. So. If any of them are unregistered, they can get tagged by the police department and then they have to be moved within forty eight hours or registered within forty eight hours. You know, so I don't see why we need to make any changes when we already have. Stuff in existence.
We don't, we don't. At this moment. We don't have the six in existence. The six is in a definition. In the zoning code, it defines. A service station as. That I that I that with no more than six things. However. We don't have any license. For service station. We had this license. For filling station that didn't exist. So what I'm saying is. We're not going to have any filling stations. But we are going to have a license. For a service station and the service station will then comply. With what the zoning ordinance defines. What what I what you had there. Was strictly the definition. Of a service station. Now I'm putting that definition. Into once you receive the license. This is what you're going to abide by.
But it still falls back to if it's an ISAR, it's probably not a registered vehicle.
That.
So. We still have that avenue. To take care of the ISARS.
For the unregistered vehicles, yes.
But there are very few unregistered vehicles and vehicles get moved in. And and again, we're getting into specifics of different. So right now there are zero gas stations and zero service stations in in West Wall. They're all filling stations, which has no definition. Other than a pump can't be more than ten or can't be.
It can't more than.
Has to be more than ten.
Can't be closer than ten feet to the street.
So there's no definition. So the process that that we've talked about going through is taking those fifteen, I think Matt Manny said. Um. Entities. And classifying as either gas stations. Which are. They sell gas. They can sell convenience of this place right here. They don't fix cars. And service stations. I think. We've determined there's only two service stations in town. By that definition.
Right, according to. The list from Paula and Manny. We have two service stations.
And the rest will be gas stations. So.
The initial, the initial. The initial ordinance or the initial definition was. That if you were a service station. You could not sell. Non automotive. Goods. If you were a gas station. You could not sell. Automotive goods. So we. Changed it. We said. Whether you're a service station. Or a gas station. You can sell automotive goods. And non automotive goods. So if if down if down the. Street, they want to sell. Something the that has to do with your car. They can do so. Or they can sell. Uh, so.
Fridos.
Oh, retail. And in the service and the gas and the service station now. He's not allowed to sell. Ice cream cones or. Uh, whatever. He's able to do that now. So both of them in their. Retail operation. Are the same. Their. Business operation. One is there to sell gas. Not do the repairs. The other one is there to. Do repairs. Do repairs, but the gas station, you can also pump some gas. The only basic change is the. What can they have? What can the service stations have left on their lots?
So this does not have any impact on a place that just like I use Johnson's all the time. Because they don't sell gas and just service vehicles has no impact on them at all.
That's correct.
All right, so I'm gonna ask you this question. Is Pep Boys in West Waller?
Is what?
Pep Boys.
But they don't sell gas, that's one reason why.
They but they're a service station, Pep Boys, correct? So they have a lot of cars in their lot. So they have, I don't know how many bays, four or five, if not more. So, all right, so they have more. So. Twelve cars go into twelve bays and twelve cars come out. So nobody's here to pick up those twelve cars. And you have people coming in the lot, going in to purchase tires.
I I think.
Mets and all that stuff.
I I think they're putting a little bit of common sense to it. Is that if my if I bring my place. Some of like Pep Boys, my cars not going to sit there.
Cause I just asked, will this affect places like that that don't sell gasoline and you said it won't affect them?
Whether they'd be under the service station's license.
So they will be affected by this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I I didn't.
Yeah, cause I.
Well, the service station ordinance would be applicable to them and we'd have some enforcement powers. My my only concern with it. Is the number of cars. I think it's artificially low. How do we come to the proper formula? Whether it's a flat number, whether it's parking spaces, whether it's square foot of the lot. I don't have, I don't have that recommendation, but.
Mark, when you mentioned, uh when I said it wouldn't affect them, I was thinking in terms of the cars on the lot. Primarily because in having gone by the, I don't see that as a problem with the type of business that they have. That that's not a business where I come in and my cars are going to sit there for three or four days. I come in, I may leave and go back. But it's it's an in and out business. It's not.
But we're not, we're not even talking about three, four days. We're talking months on the annual overcrowding is more what you want to enforce, correct? I mean, so, I mean, personally, I don't think the police department will be driving by every business and saying, oh, that car's been yet. Yeah, trucking the tires, saying that car's been there three days, oh, fourth day. And I I don't think that's what this is.
No, normally it's a resident that calls the planes and then then they go and they make a note of it. They'll do a report and say, all right, this vehicle is here, this van.
Traditionally, unless it's on the street, it's not a police matter. If it's on private property, it's a building official matter. And minimum housing's been taking care of those and issuing notices.
I don't have any problem with.
Al, one of the reasons why I'm asking you this question too is I have two different businesses in my ward that are both service stations. One is very maintains three to four cars a day and that's it. You know, that's what he brings in. But he also has U-hauls that he rents out of there. So is that part of the account of cars?
I think we're gonna, and coming by, please have, and I I'm mentioning today, my feeling is that. If we put these two ordinances into into effect, we can start with this and then we have a situation. Well, okay, this is what you're doing with your service station. Now, you also need. That U-Haul business, that's a totally separate business from your service.
Then you have service stations that are service stations in tow truck companies. If they're bringing cars in and parking them in behind the fence, it's not part of the count. You know, I'm trying to protect some business.
You've got a service station business that is limited to what you're doing. And then you've got a tow truck business that has. A different set of rules, which may allow the other dish to gas. That's why I brought up what we did, what we did today was that. This is a, the first step in what I personally consider a long range to try and resolve that except. We got a situation now where we have so many licenses that we don't know what they are. That Paula calls them business licenses and that's not any reflection on Paula.
That was a handoff.
Business registration.
You know, some of them are considered business license.
They're actually labeled licenses, but they shouldn't be. Yes, correct.
Yeah, so, so, you know.
Trying to correct that for the last couple of years.
Yes, so so I think after the meeting today, we sat down and we've come up with. I think an orderly process to get there. So I want to go step by step. The first thing. There are seventy three different state statutes that deal with licensing. Some of them clearly say it's up to the state. And I use the example of the state can say, okay. The town is going to regulate air salons and the language is certain. And then the next one down says the town is going to regulate barber shops. And the language is totally different than the first one. So I think this that I said today, our starting point is. See what we have by way of potential licenses. Whose responsibility is it? Is it the state? Is it us with state guidance? Is it us alone? Is it strictly a permit? And until we get to that, but in my, strictly my opinion, we're in a mess. And and so I'm asking this as a small start to an existing problem.
So when you said this is the first step in fixing the problem, you weren't talking about specifically filling stations. You were talking about licensing in general as a whole.
This happened to come up primarily neighbors complaints and what I do. So we took the first step to try and resolve this issue. And then.
When it was looked at, we determined that everybody was a filling station. We weren't even using gas. We weren't, we weren't registering. Or licensing people as gas stations and service stations. And there are a number of places in our ordinances that we have. Uh some deficiencies. Yeah.
I I made a, I one last, I made a chart of four different categories. Uh one is. Defined in the zoning code, one is uh an ordinance, an ordinance in the zoning code. One is in our fee schedule and one is what Paula issued. And we, I think I with all those four categories. We only have a half a dozen that are in all of them. We've got some items that are in one, but not in another. So, you know, it's. I I wouldn't want Paula's job to, when it comes to the licensing, quality in China. And she does a hell of a job with it.
Any comment from the council? Public comment on this ordinance? It's it's just the number. That's the, you can speak. I'm just saying the number seems.
The concept, I believe, is important to to move forward with the number. Again, if you have one bay, six cars might be okay. So I don't know what that.
Pep Boys is obviously a different size than a smaller place. That's that's my only.
That's my point.
I think what Jay said earlier makes no sense, registered or unregistered. Whatever you need to have there, if they're registered or unregistered, you know, limit it and, you know, then get them out because if they're unregistered.
But there is one circumstance in town that I do know of where there are registered cars because. There's another business elsewhere in the state. They put a plate on it and it's it's it has a plate, has a legitimate plate. Yeah. So so and and I think it also. Well, I, yeah. But but I also think that it depends on where it's located. Pep Boys is in a business zone. If it's in a residential neighborhood, I think there's a problem. And and those are the kinds of things that.
Pep Boys has a parking lot and it's parking space, it's really not an ISR. If a car's in a parking lot as opposed to in a residential area when there's like.
I I.
You gotta move twelve cars to get to the car you're working.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree in there with the ordinance. I just think that there has to be some, there has to be an ability for us to have some discretion. Um, and we can't count on, we said the ordinance, we can't assume that somebody else is going to have discretion. You know, you you really have to go by what the ordinance says. You can't count on somebody having.
I think that.
I just wish there was a way that it was based on, like you said, the amount of parking spaces or the size of the the business. I I just think that there.
There's so many variables. If you have a a place, any business with three people working versus ten people. I would give it to pizza plates. You're gonna pump out more product and it's gonna in in a faster amount of time. So basically, I think, to me, it seems like you you're screwing the little guy again. And the little guy's the foundation of the town. And and there's many of them in West Waller.
Or the amount of time, or even if we had a company, the amount of time the cars there, there are exceptions, you know.
How do you track that though?
No, you don't, no.
There's so many variables.
Yeah, that's, it's difficult. Yeah, that's.
You know.
But maybe it is in.
I think the the bottom line is whether it's big guy or little guy, we've we've tried to ask nicely to. Um, make something safe and presentable and we failed. So we're. Grasping at straws to try to find some type of enforcement where we actually have some teeth to. To make the town aesthetically pleasing and more safe.
See us affect if they if they're, and I don't, I don't know the specific business, so I don't know if there's a specific spot. I don't want to. Affect all these other businesses negatively because of one business. That would be my only.
And again, I think we're talking about two businesses right now.
We're talking about three. If I could put my point in, I think we could kill the conversation or Al's gonna hit me. But just to to clarify for myself, we're talking gas stations and service stations. We've always, in my opinion, from my knowledge, a gas station is Cumberland Farms or the fellow right over here behind us. And a service station is the gentleman on Coesit or next door to.
Phoenix diner.
Thank you. Does he still sell gas?
No.
Oh, okay, then that's that wouldn't be.
He's a service station.
Hmm, no. A service station sells gas. A gas station, no, I want to try to finish this. A service station sells gas and does repairs. A gas station just sells gas. An automotive repair center. Pep Boys, uh the Town Fair Tire, Walmart, things like that. Jennings Brothers. There was a problem with Jennings Brothers when they were at Pep Boys.
Yeah.
That's going along. But that, well, that's the thing. You've got to get the definition straight because Pep Boys and. Walmart and Ty and Town Fair Tire, they do repairs on automobiles. They don't sell gas. They're an automotive repair center. And I think there's a big difference between automotive repair center, gas station and service station.
That's why I asked the question.
And I don't think that.
Exactly. I got that.
I don't think they're a service station, to be honest with you.
They're not. And and the service stations are the 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 gentleman on Coesit on the top of the hill.
Yes.
That's a service station. He sells gas and he repairs automobiles.
Oh, and he he does other things.
Oh, that's, well, that's what was said in the beginning of this conversation. A service station sells gas and.
Right.
Okay, so a service station is Pep Boys. That's a service station in in that. So I think, you know, the definition, I don't know if it's a legal definition with the state.
On the same definition. And that's what I'm confused on.
Well, I'm sorry, David.
I've heard three different definitions for the same definition.
Right, but would you agree that there needs to be three separate entities and not two? We can't loop Pep Boys in.
I agree with that. They are an automo, but we don't have, we don't have, I don't think.
And I hate, don't hit me, but maybe it needs to, that needs to get, that wording needs to get worked in so we don't hurt. The fellow down, I can't remember him and his wife. They run that for.
Tony's one stop.
Oh, yeah. They've been there for fifty, sixty years.
Nobody wants to hurt them.
And the guy on Coesit, we don't want to hurt those little guys, but there's, to me, I'm seeing three separate types of business. One that sells gas like Cumberland, the fellow up on Coesit, remember his name, the Arabic gentleman.
Big cold gas.
Big, yes. And he sells gas and he does, he has three bays, I believe. And.
And he does other things. He has U-Haul and he.
And he has U-Haul and propane, exactly.
He does other things. So nobody's looking to.
Right. So I would think that that would be considered a service station. I think we just need another definition or another class. For big, the big places like Pep Boys.
Not even big places. There's a lot of small places that just automotive, they just do.
And they don't sell gas. Exactly. Automotive repair shops.
Yes, I use Johnson's and, you know, they don't sell gas. They just fix vehicles and they do.
That's the only thing I wanted to try to clarify myself, but I guess I dug deeper. Thank you.
My my dear Mr. John, to follow the reasoning and and I, I don't have any disagreement with, uh. But if you're gonna follow that road, then I think what we're saying is, don't try and do this piecemeal. Let's put this aside and go to the, oh, you know.
Well, I I would, I would, don't do this piecemeal. I think we need to act on service station, gas station, automotive. I can say, I can see putting it off until we have a a better idea as to the number of cars. However. Not waiting until we're talking about the entire. I mean, I mean, that would be, that that's a huge, huge project.
So basically, I was saying, I mean, we have gas stations, we have service stations. Find enough definition for Pep Boys and.
And it might be automotive, whoever.
Find, find.
Might be there.
And try to determine what kind of different automobile type shops. And just try and do something directed towards automobiles or vehicles. And come back with that. Good luck, Al.
Paul Villa fifteen Janet Drive. Um, in my previous life, I've dealt with this for like thirty years. This has gone on. And a little historical knowledge on the registrations, the issue we were having is in a lot of these places. Fly by nighters were coming in. They were, they were renting a place, saying they were a car repair facility. They were, they were staying in business for like three or four months, leaving gas tanks, tires, everything else along the riverbanks and everything else. And then before you know it, overnight they're gone. So we never had a way to track these people. And so the registration came in to be a way for police and fire. To be able to get a hold of somebody, number one, if there was an emergency at the business, because if they're not telling us anything, we don't know in the middle of the night who. Who owns the business. And if there were other hazards and things like that, we could get a hold of somebody. So that's what, that was the best. Guess we had at the time was to do something like that. So we at least have some information on them. And as far as looking at definitions, uh, the council president brought up a good point, is you have at least three of these places that are tow companies. Okay, so you're gonna have to add probably another definition for them because they do have a lot of cars. A lot of them come from the police department. Okay, a lot of them come from triple A. Uh, and quite frankly, when when we go into a snowstorm. And our tow companies are called out to grab all these cars that have been on roads, unregistered and whatever. They end up at their tow companies. And the process they have to go to, to be able to dispose of these vehicles takes months. They have to send out registered letters. They have to go through the state. They have to do all kinds of stuff, jump through hoops. So six cars isn't going to work in those kind of businesses. So I I think you have to, you have to really look at that. And then one other question I have for you. When we talked last night at planning board meeting about ordinances having teeth. And being able to hold people accountable, at least in the in the realm of, we were talking about. Low income housing or whatever, that's subpar. You said that the town can issue violations. And we can write them up, we can take them to municipal court, but that's as far as it goes. They can ignore them. We can't do nothing about it. Is this gonna be the same way? This is gonna work?
This is a situation where they don't comply.
Okay, all right, all right. So there's gonna be teeth to it. Okay.
One thing to, to, well, Colin, and I will, I represented the Rhode Island Public Towing Association for a number of years. And I have to say that what he says about what they go through in the back of the storm is. Is a major issue. So we're gonna table this till the meeting on the table and give me, give me some time to try and. Expand on, I don't, three weeks out, because I'm next meeting in three weeks out, not two.
That's the last week of February.
Does that work or do you want to move it past? I don't know. No, I don't want to do it faster. How how about the the first meeting in in March?
First meeting in March?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just gonna let you know I will not be here March seventh.
I I think you should be, if, personally. You're the council president.
So so the three, so the, you don't think three weeks is good to do?
Not.
Just for the gas station?
I I want to make sure I done my my homework.
Twenty first.
Twenty.
No.
First.
March is the twenty first, February is, yes, yes.
I mean, I, this, this is one where I'm gonna have to do some, some digging, talking to Paul. Talking to the fire, the fire chief and the police chief to find out what do we have here in town and. Uh, maybe, you know, fi, and going on, I won't be able, going on Google, the map and. You know, seeing what what is this operation because from what, and I'm not in any way disagreeing, but I think the discussion is. Let's put these people each in a proper category. Uh, as try and blanket them all into one. And so I just, I would prefer not having the pressure. Uh, to get it done and not not feel comfortable that I, I try to present to you what I think is my best product and I just. Want the time to work on it.
All right, I'll make a motion to table this item until the March twenty first meeting, twenty twenty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you put into it. I just want to make sure that we do it right.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash five, amending appendix C traffic ordinances.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
This is, this is a, uh, has to be a first anywhere. I'm asking the council. To approve putting a stop sign at the intersection of Mellow Drive with Mellow Drive. In Ward one, and I'm asking the council to put another stop sign at the intersection of Mellow Drive with Mellow Drive in Ward two. What Mellow Drive is a T intersection. Unfortunately, the bottom of the T. And the upright part of the T, part of the T are all named Mellow Drive. If you're going west on Mellow Drive, they want to put a stop sign where the north south Mellow Drive. Comes into it. And that's in very best sport. And if you're coming south on Mellow Drive. They want to put a stop sign where it goes into the east west Mellow Drive, which is in David's Ward.
I asked a question, like, to Mary Beth, like, is this your ward? Like, I'm looking at it. In the way the the map was drawn, I'm like.
When, when Major Ashenbro sent it.
The outside is his.
When Major Ashenbro sent it to me, I called her, I called him back. I called him back and said, so you're asking for stop signs, two stop signs at the intersection of Mellow Drive with Mellow Drive. And his answer was. I've been waiting for this phone call. But that's, that's what it is.
Any questions for Al? This is, this is a recommendation from the traffic committee. I mean, I I would have to support Major Ashenbro. Not with the definition of a stop sign in the business.
He might be, but not tonight.
Any public comment on Mellow Drive stop sign? All right, um, Jason? Yes, I know.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we moved that on a one.
Liquor license. Town council acting as liquor license commission. Request from Filippo's Twisted Pizza West Warwick to transfer class BV limited liquor license. To Desmar LLC doing business as Filippo's Twisted Pizza West Warwick.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second. Second, any discussion? Any public discussion on this liquor license? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Business licenses.
Move approval of the business licenses, which we might change later.
Second, discussion? Any public discussion on these business licenses? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So these have been approved Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Coming back.
It is coming back. Different order. Friendly sons of Saint Patrick's.
Coming back is Kentucky Fried and Taco Bell or something. I think that I heard that.
I heard this. I don't know. So, um. Community Mocking LLC has been approved. Mary Lynn Sidersky has been approved. And Central Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce has been approved and Palagi's Ice Cream has been approved.
Also the other parade too. I know a lot of people ask, and I just want to clarify the parade, just so those that don't know, it is the Sunday. Before Saint Patrick's Day, which is the twelfth, the twelfth, just, it's that every year, but just want to clarify for anybody that may be watching at home. It's the twelfth of March.
Right. New Business O one was previously considered, so New Business O two, discussion of tax abatements during vision software upgrade.
Kristen and Rose?
So we are finally moving forward with our vision upgrade for our tax assessing and collecting software. So we are on the the docket to start mid February. Something that one of the programmers brought up to us last week was that we have a lot of old, old receivables. And they're pretty much all motor vehicle. So it's about four hundred and fifty two thousand. And we would like to clean up this old, they're they're not collectible and we'd like to abate them and get them off.
You don't want to bring them over to the new system.
Exactly. It's gonna create problems. Um, so, uh, we are asking. Um, so, uh, we are asking actually for your approval to abate four hundred and fifty-two thousands of motor vehicle taxes going from two thousand nine back to nineteen ninety-nine. Um, how many accounts is that? It's like three thousand, three thousand sixty accounts. A lot of them are twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars.
I read in there that it's beyond the ten-year statute of limitations.
It is beyond the ten-year, yep.
And I also read in there that it's going to still be, like, the data will still be there for you to research if you need to.
Exactly.
It just won't mess with the numbers that you're trying to fix.
Yes, yes. And as far as our financials are concerned, we are, we have an allowance that goes against our receivables. So it's gonna have a zero effect on our financials. It's gonna make them look better. We won't have so such old receivables. It'll look better for bond rating agencies.
Is there a mechanism to do that every year now so it stays clean?
We're gonna, we're gonna stay on that. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, cuz it's silly to come back ten years from now and say, can I?
Yes. The only ones we're
Exactly right.
We are leaving a few real estate.
No motor vehicles, right, right.
We're leaving some old real estate on there because they were ones that the town took at tax sale. Um, so we're not yeah, we're not ready to take those off.
People that may be interested in purchasing them.
Yeah.
Or signing the title and then going and proposing on it.
So we
So you picked two thousand and nine cuz it clears the ten years and all. So with motor vehicle.
Yeah, you Two thousand, it was, that's what the programmers were most concerned about at this point was two thousand and nine going back. So
Could you clean it up even a little more? And I mean, is it
We'd have to look to see what the number, oh, I do have it, actually. So two thousand and, so what that would bring us, we're in twenty-three, so twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-nine, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, thirteen. So if we did twelve, there's eighty-one thousand, two hundred and five and twelve of motor vehicle receivable, and eleven, there's sixty-three, seven, twelve, and two thousand and ten, sixty-two. So that's about another two hundred thousand.
How much have you, off the top of your head, if you know, collected from things that are over ten years old? How often does that happen?
We don't collect a lot.
We don't collect a lot. Someone will come in once in the room stating that they have, um, we need to clear it on their motor vehicle that they blocking them.
I I saw that on the reports, and I think we were collecting somewhere like around a thousand dollars out of that five hundred that's owed.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand. So that's all, that's all we had collected.
And when I checked, the the law firms are actually
They don't really collect. Collect, they won't collect this old.
No.
They only go ten
We get it when they go to register and there was a block on it.
And the tax offset, uh, has helped us out too, that program with collecting the old receivables.
I mean, I I just, instead of leaving, I would think would make the conversion easier. I I, you know, I mean, we could get, if we could get approval, just do the two thousand and nine back, then we could come back before you. Well, or do you, I mean, I don't know, can we change the number? Do you need an exact number? Or do you just need to give authorization for us to abate based on the ten-year statute?
I think we'd have to have the actual number cuz it's
I think we probably want it.
Twenty-eight hours.
Yeah. So we have the actual number for two thousand and nine going back, which we have the receivable listing.
So, but my point is, do you wanna convert those other records?
Right.
And if you're gonna do it in mid-February, they're starting them.
Two thousand and ten, they, some people still come in. I mean, not often, but people do come in.
The company itself is only recommending recommending two thousand and nine, right?
The conversion starts on the seventeenth.
Yeah, so that's why we're kind of pressed.
So it's worthwhile to keep ten, you know?
I would say for now.
At this point, I think, and once we get through the conversion, then we can readdress them. Um, I mean, if, cuz if we go
Which is fine. Again, the whole point of this, I think, was to to make the conversion easier for you.
Yes.
And the more records you can leave off, put into archives as opposed to convert them, I I thought that would move you.
It would, but I'm afraid that we would, would we have a special meeting? I mean, if we can't do it tonight, no. Our biggest thing is to get the two thousand and nine back off.
Okay.
Because we're, we are gonna be down for two weeks.
And and each year you will bring something forward?
Yes.
To the council. So maybe at that point, but you'll just have to convert those records, as I said.
Yeah, and they didn't think it was that that was gonna be a problem.
No, they just said to get, try to get rid of two thousand and nine. Ninety-nine through two thousand and nine.
We don't wanna be too aggressive. I mean, we we were a little nervous bringing four hundred and fifty thousand up, so.
I I mean
It's just motor vehicle.
It is just motor vehicle. Tangibles we had cleaned up through two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
So you feel it, it was like we're not gonna be able to collect any?
No, I mean, maybe a couple hundred here, there.
Nothing significant.
No.
So, well, this is actually on for discussion only. I I would, we, I would, I know that you've asked that we actually, and and Sarah and Tara, I guess, wow, that's tough. I guess I'd ask, didn't know that until I assume that we can actually make a motion to approve this cuz it was discussion only. It does say you can take action.
It does say the council may act upon anything, so I would defer to you on that one.
Um, it was It does say that at the beginning, so if you do choose to act on it, and since it does have times of the essence, I don't think it would be a problem.
Any other questions for Kristen and Rose? Hearing none, I'm just gonna motion to
I make a motion that we approve the tax abatement for Vision software upgrade.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Do you want the amount in that motion?
I have the, oh, the letter.
I have, yeah, I have that. I don't, I was just asking, do you want the amount?
Should the amount be in the, in the, um, motion?
So the motion, I will amend that a motion to be in the amount, the abatement of taxes in the amount of five hundred and three thousand.
No, 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 no.
It's, it's, I'm sorry.
Four hundred and forty-two, seven, fifteen, thirty-two.
It's in the resolution itself. Yeah, four, four fifty-two, seven, fifteen, thirty-two.
Second.
Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
All right. Authorization to award contract to Nevco Sports Marketing for the installation and marketing of scoreboards at the Civic Center Fieldhouse and Ice Rink.
Need a motion?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, Lori? Good evening.
Evening. So I just wanna move forward. I know I wrote this back in November to you guys. Um, I did break down, I'm pretty sure that you got the spreadsheet here of what it would be. Um, in my memo to Mark, it breaks down what the price point will be, when it would be paid back to us, the revenues after we reach the threshold of fifty-two thousand dollars. If we were to have to put any money into the installation, it would be fifteen thousand dollars out of the enterprise fund. Um, I don't really know what else to say about it at this point.
Did you have a bid with this?
It, this is a sole vendor. There's no one else that does this. No one else that does the exact same thing that they do, where they purchase the scoreboards, they do the marketing, we get revenue shares from it. There's no other company that does it.
I I rewatched the meeting from, uh, November for us today. Uh, it was supposed to be continued to, it was tabled to eleven fifteen. This is one of the things I had mentioned.
That was completely my fault. That was my fault dealing with the
We're now with three months.
They had a new salesperson. They, you know, there was different things that came in play.
Well, but some of the other stuff that was brought up during during that meeting was, you know, for, that I had asked, and I don't see it anywhere in this documentation, is how much would it cost for us to do it ourselves?
Did you not attach that?
It's
So, um, I did have a spreadsheet here. And I don't know if it just didn't attach or
We have two documents, the, um,
Yeah, it's there.
memorandum.
So if we were to do it ourselves, it would cost forty-five thousand dollars.
Seventy-nine dollars, forty, forty-five thousand, seventy-nine dollars.
And that was me picking the, the middle of the road of the model four, seven, seven, zero. That was me picking the middle of the road of the other models that would be in the field house. So, you know, if we were to do it ourselves and there was one cost that I didn't put on there, which I obviously didn't know about, is that the electrician does not hang the scoreboards too, so you have to get another person to come out and hang the scoreboards after the electrician goes through and does whatnot. So, um, you know, going through that company, it could initially cost us fifteen thousand dollars that we would make back within the first couple of years, cuz at a two thousand, three thousand point for the fifteen cabinets that are around it, we would make our money back in two years.
So is there any other companies out there that provide scoreboards?
Are there other companies that provide scoreboard?
So if we put out the bid and get, didn't it like, you know, so sort of Williamson mentioned at the, one of the other meetings is, if you make your bid so specific, you're only gonna get one company. That's what it seems like with this, cuz there are other companies around that do scoreboard, right?
Yeah, there's other companies that you could buy a scoreboard from, and you could purchase it, and it would cost us over forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, maybe. Depends on what went out the bid. So when you lump stuff together, you usually get a better deal, so it might not be forty-five thousand. But even if it was forty-five thousand, so we're gonna lose forty-four thousand to them, so we're not actually getting them for free, so we're paying forty-four thousand dollars for them anyway, whether they're, and then on top of that forty-four thousand, we're gonna lose any, we're gonna lose fifty percent of any advertisement that comes through off of that on top of it. So it's gonna cost us more than the forty-five thousand here. Because let's say it takes us
I I missed it, I'm sorry.
So the first forty-four thousand dollars goes to Nevco.
Fifty-two. Fifty-two is the threshold.
Of advertising money.
Right.
Correct.
So that goes to Nevco immediately. And after that, fifty percent goes to them, and we get the other fifty percent.
Correct.
Correct. If we bought them ourselves, all the advertisement money will come back to the enterprise fund.
Who's, who's gonna do that? Who's gonna solicit that advertising and do the contracts?
Your title is marketing director.
Amongst a lot of other things that
I I get it, but that's your title.
That's
That's what you're hired as, is a marketing director.
It, that's not a, it's not an internal function that we're capable of handling. So the proposal is, is to more or less outsource this function to fulfill the needs of of the facilities so we can have adequate scoreboards for the people that rent it and are paying good money to do so.
And I agree with that, but we can do that without outsourcing. We have brand-new scoreboard going into Wolffield, right? How'd that come about?
Mostly donations.
Mostly donations. And how did the donation, did these companies just rant us down, or did somebody go to these companies and ask them?
Probably a combination of both.
No, people went to the companies and asked them. That's what marketing directors do, is they reach out and say, hey, we have this stuff coming in. Can we, you wanna advertise here? It's how much it's gonna cost. And then we use APRA funds for all these different things. And part of it is revenue loss for, and we lost revenue with the ice rink, right, during COVID? So we can use APRA funds to buy the scoreboards. The marketing director can reach out and do advertising, and we don't have to pay Nevco forty-four thousand plus fifty percent after, after that for the next five years.
Globally, that's probably true, but I don't think it's efficient and the the best use of our time and resources based on what we have now.
Job description. Responsible for the development and implementation of the marketing and public relations of the Ice Rink and Civic Center. Develop sponsorship programs to increase revenue. That's your job description.
Amongst many other things.
Okay, but that's your primary job description because when she was appointed, council president reported, council president at the time, that town excited Lori Swanson as a new marketing director at the Civic Center. That's her primary job is marketing. So I don't see
Over the years, let's, let's clarify, that's going back, when were you hired?
That was two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. So, to be honest with you, yes, you're right. That was the position, strictly marketing. But is it evolved to something totally different? The title's never changed. Should it change? Absolutely.
And I would, I would respectfully request if it's gonna shift from proposing this plan, if it's gonna get into assessing personnel and assignment, that we do that in another, in another, so
I'm not assessing. I am trying to say why we shouldn't be voting for Nevco.
So Lori
That's all part of this. There's nothing to do with Lori. It has nothing to do with her at all. If the town is putting more responsibilities on her than what she signed up for, that's the town's problem. And the taxpayer shouldn't have to pay for it by having to go to Nevco. Because as we determined the last time this was brought up, it's an enterprise fund, but that enterprise fund owes the town a decent amount of money that the taxpayers are on the hook for. So this is a way that we get more revenue into the enterprise fund to get that money back to the taxpayers where it belongs. This has nothing to do with Lori. This has to do with the system that we're trying to implement. It doesn't make sense.
What what advertisement would they, Nevco, hit that we can't hit?
Well, if I mentioned that
They would probably go for, you know, like the Dick's Sporting Goods and things like that. And and again, at the, in a perfect world, I would love to go after bigger advertisements, but I'm responsible for scheduling, I'm responsible for the people, every single person that walks through the door, I'm, I'm responsible for all
I know what the job
For all of these things. So in a perfect world, does the the Civic Center Enterprise Fund have the money to go out and spend forty-five, fifty thousand dollars on new scoreboard? No, it doesn't. It does not have that money at this current time to do that.
That's what APRA funds
Was
Can we use it, Mark? Can we use the APRA funds?
Something later on the agenda, which we're probably not gonna talk about because the email Mark sent, but that's looking at almost a million dollars of APRA money.
Right, but this is
You don't wanna go, you wanna spend all on, you're talking about taxpayers being on the hook. We're gonna spend all this APRA money on one building? Over a million dollars, plus another fifty thousand for scoreboard?
This is mine. What shape are the scoreboards?
Terrible.
Alright, so, alright, so
They're terrible. Like, they were probably put up in nineteen seventy-six on the building.
So we need four new scoreboards?
We need four new scoreboards, yes, one hundred percent.
Personally, I'm not never a big fan of of leasing, like I've told you guys before, or outsourcing. I think, I think Lori has the full capability as, like you said before, you can sell ice to an Ascomo many times. I think you could do that. I mean, I really think they're not gonna hit anybody that we couldn't do. And personally, I think it means more coming from the town versus a company that is going
If I had three of me, we could absolutely one hundred percent do it, but I don't have three of me.
But the other part of the contract that's listed, it says the customer will, and under number four, it says provide NSM with a complete sponsorship program package, including potential sponsor leads. So she still has to come up with who she wants there because that's the requirement. So she's gonna come up with it anyway. What's the difference of typing up a letter and sending it out and saying, hey, do you wanna have?
I wish everybody would just type out a letter and say, hey, you wanna do it? I mean, there's lots of meetings and there's going back and forth, there's design, there's all that stuff. But all the advertisement that we have at the Civic Center currently right now, I am the person that goes out and gets it. I'm the person that designs it, whether it's in the ice, it's a billboard, it's any of that stuff. Right, but what about, so if I took all my time and did that specifically, we would have no renters, we would have no one to answer all the complaints, we would have no one to schedule.
I'm sorry, I, this is, but this is, we're not, it's not really for this meeting, though. I think
Again, I'm not picking on Lori.
No, I wanna keep it inside.
But you're kinda are because you're saying she can do it. She's telling you she can't do it. And you're, you're reading her job description, which is fine, but you're saying she can do it, and she's telling you that she can't do it. The town manager says you're gonna waste resources on it. And and he's telling you that the two people that run the department are telling you that they're gonna be wasting resources, they won't have the time, it'll be taken away from other responsibilities. But you're saying you're not picking on it. And I'm not, you know, but you're kinda are because you've got two people
I disagree with that. I disagree with that.
I'm thinking of the fact of going out to Nevco to outsource something that we don't need to outsource. And we have APRA funds that we've spent lots of money on all these different areas.
I just said, it's on the agenda. There's a nine hundred thousand dollar expense that they wanna spend APRA money on. Why add more to it if they have somebody else who wants to feed for it? And and going back, there are some people that volunteered and offered their services to put scoreboards up. You're one hundred percent right. And then there's also people that were solicited, but vice versa, you're not always gonna get that lucky. Nobody, nobody has come up and said
Have we tried? That's the point.
The ice rink, yes. And I've had more parents come to me over the last five years and and state legislators and whoever saying, why are you gonna replace a scoreboard at that building?
I don't deny that they need to be replaced. I have no
They've asked. And she found a way to come without taking it out of the pocket. That's all.
But it does take it out of the pocket, takes it out of the pocket in the future.
The pocket of advertising.
It costs us a lot more than what we're getting out of it.
So
It can be painted one way or looked at in reality.
So Kristen, Kristen, can seventeen twenty-one one be utilized for this? Okay. Okay, scoreboard is part of recreation whether you're on a ball field, indoor, indoors or outdoors. So we have, do we have more than forty five thousand dollars in seventeen twenty one?
Yes. Yes.
How much?
Right.
So. If, if we can talk about that versus Nevco, I'm all for giving the scoreboard money to you because you're saying we need them. And then as far as any type of advertisement would be basically the same as. Or I'm not telling you how to do your job, but we have advertisement in the ice rink, advertisement in the field house. Banners on the boards. It'd be the same, it's not the same thing, but it's the same precedent of. Bringing in the advertisement and we collect the entire, the entire package. And there's, if there's enough money in seventeen twenty one, you're still at two hundred something thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is why we have seventeen twenty one month.
Alright, so I'm just gonna make a statement. So we just have to decide, am I the scheduler? Am I the person that keeps care of the maintenance? Or am I the marketing person at this point? I would like to further on make that suggestion.
So going out to find somebody to donate the scoreboard, I'm not gonna pat myself on the back, took me ten minutes. For an eighteen thousand dollar scoreboard. However, if she doesn't have the time to do that stuff. I know as per our duties as a rec board, we have nothing to do with up on the hill. But now you're gonna come into a point where you might need us to try to solicit this. Just like it was brought to us to solicit for, to help her raise funds for the music programs and all that with the bands and stuff. So you either gotta, as a rec committee, you either gotta open the door for us to service all avenues. Or we don't do nothing with the top of the hill. But I know I have confidence in my board. That we can sit down and I guarantee you we can come up with some donors or a way to solve this issue. But I'm not gonna stick my head in and my board members neither. And probably my liaison is gonna say the same thing unless we have permission from this council. That we can assist with recreation in whatever on the hill, but not selectively. Because I was, that's what we were told when we formed the committee.
That you're not allowed.
That's a separate entity and it's not, I, I said that, but that's a separate entity.
Is that what it says in the, in the bylaws or, I don't remember saying that.
I, I think that's, that's a discussion.
But I don't think, I don't think it says that, though. I think, I, I think people have interpreted something.
So the, the.
So I've been so many questions about the recreation board and there's been relatively no meetings. So I think what should happen personally, as I've been on the rec board since oh four. We, we haven't had any issues with the rec board from oh four to two thousand and twenty two. So it's eighteen years and everything went smooth. So I think what needs to be done, and I don't know why it's not going smooth, is. A draft needs to be put in place of the responsibilities of the rec board in detail. Whether it's gonna be involving the civic center or not, involving just the fields, involving if they're acting as agents of the town, going out to. Dick's Sports and saying, I'm so and so on the rec board and I wanna go in, um, we need a scoreboard, can you donate? Personally, I think that's the agent of the town, whether it's Laurie or it's a employee. But it's my opinion, but there needs to be, if recreation is gonna move forward, I think it should be. Meetings need to take place once a month at a time on a specific, whether it's the first Monday of the month at six o'clock in this, in this room. Or it's down the street at the civic center.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's all related to what Laurie's bringing up here.
And I already told some people sitting here, I don't want nothing to do with this rec committee. We can't do anything. If we're non-functional, there's no point in having a board. I'm direct. That's the way it is. If there's no point in the board and we can't form it, we don't have no duties. We have no nothing. We've had this discussion. But here I am, I'm trying to help. But how do I help? I don't get a phone call, make a meeting, let's figure this out, let's work as a board because we don't have no purpose. Give us a purpose and we'll do it. And we're supposed to make recommendations to the council. How do we make recommendations to the council when we have no task?
So I did go to a meeting last summer. For the summer concerts, because I also take care of the town's summer concert. And I did ask the rec board to help solicit and get some gift cards and whatnot so that the concerts could be more fun. No. So there's no line in the sand. There's no nothing here. There's no fine line for anything here. So I, I mean, I, I do the job, whether it's, I'm a janitor or. I'm the person that's asking you for nine hundred thousand dollars for a new system. Like I'm that person. There's no one else there but me. So when you say you want me to market, well, then fine, I'll market.
So, so Laurie, let me just clarify something. And I'm just, keep me straight and honest here. I think at this point, and I'm not sure where the entire council feels, I, I, I hear two saying, we're not, don't go with Nevco and. Go out and get the boards through seventeen twenty one month. So at this point, well, my recommendation, I guess the council can let me know how they feel. Is go out to bid for four scoreboards, bring it before us, and then we vote on without Nevco. It, it, not even saying advertising, not. Probably not, but you know what?
So, so along those lines, if we go out to bid, that company would install them or do we have to have someone else install?
We're gonna get an electrician. We're gonna have to get someone to hang them. We're gonna have to do all sorts of good.
I think one thing we're overlooking here is.
Just one second, Jeff. The last meeting you said that the school department said that they were, they.
They will definitely help us out, but I mean, what happens if they run into a project?
I don't think, and, and I don't think we should be relying on the school committee, the school.
I'm just going with what Laurie said at the last meeting is that they already agreed to the electrical assistance on that. Just telling you what was said at the last meeting. That's all I'm saying.
We run into a big problem. You have to remember the electricity hasn't been touched since nineteen seventy six.
That's, that's one thing we're overlooking is, and, and you guys can go any way you want, but from past experience with electricity at the ball fields and stuff. With Nevco, I believe it was up to fifteen thousand dollars per, if I'm wrong.
Yes.
Okay, you're looking at a heck of a lot more than that if we do it on our own. I, I'm just, I, I could tell you by looking at it, seeing it. You're looking at probably almost as much as you're gonna pay for the scoreboards. That's just my opinion.
Are we paying, are we, are we paying the extra regardless then? Electrical, I don't remember what you're saying.
No.
They were able to just plug them in and be like, woo hoo, they're great, they're wonderful. Then.
But if it would've cost them another twenty thousand for electrical, I think we're still, we're still paying for it regardless, right?
Fifteen. We, we're capped at fifteen.
Regardless?
Yeah, we're at fifteen.
We're capped at fifteen, even if it costs them more to do the electrical. If it costs them twenty thousand beyond that, we're not, we're not on the hook for that electrical. Okay. I like the idea of the signs.
I, I, I just think if we're gonna, we're looking to upgrade, we've got somebody who will. Put them in at a cap of fifteen for us now. I understand that we don't get a share of the advertising until. Till they. Hopefully, if they reach their fifty two thousand dollar threshold. And then after five years, it's all ours.
It's all ours.
What happens in five years? Yes, go ahead.
So say they sign someone on in year four for a three-year contract. Our obligation is to keep that person's advertisement up for the following two years.
So, so five years down the road. There are nothing to do, there are, but how do we then replace those or will Dick's Sporting Goods continue to do it? Or Dick says they're not gonna do it.
We would have to go out and we would have to solicit to them at that point. I mean, the whole point of this was just to get the scoreboards to just save the money. Do you, there's a million things. I could write you a list from. You know, three days long. I mean, I've been asking for.
Not another, as a council, we've talked about outsourcing things over the years and we've, and there are times when it is a good idea. Our hands are strong and most times we cannot source things because.
I would have a generator up there. In a perfect world, you know.
Why did it go from forty four thousand to fifty two thousand?
Increase of prices, that's what I was told.
So again, I'm not gonna go down that road, but it was forty four thousand three months ago. Now it's fifty two thousand. It's like. Now it's an even higher threshold to, to, to reach before we can get to it. So again, it's to me. I, I don't see the benefit to the taxpayers or the enterprise fund to go this route. I don't see the benefit. Short term, there's a benefit. I agree there. Very short term, but beyond that, it hurts you in the long run.
And how, how long would it take to get these, like, if we sign the deal with them, how long would it take them to get?
They're, they aim for forty five to ninety days.
So it's pretty quick. We'd have it up pretty quickly. I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, so. I say we vote on it.
I don't think it's a bad idea in general.
I think it saves us money overall a, at this current time to. Get scoreboards up there that we need. I mean.
We have the money, though. That's, that's what I'm not understanding is we have the money. So.
But there's an opportunity cost. You spend the money on that, you can't spend it somewhere else. And if we can.
If it keeps building up, so why would it build up if you're never gonna use it?
Oh, it will be, it will be used as we, as we are.
Let's say you went for a grant, a matching grant.
This isn't gonna drain the two hundred and eighty thousand.
No, but let, let's just say, you know, Jay, you prompted playground. If, if it costs us a half a million dollars, we gotta grant for two hundred fifty, we have to match it for two fifty. You don't wanna just take that seventeen twenty one and nickel and dimed it that down to nothing, because when you have that big project coming along, like a splash pad or. Something to that extent, you know, because that, that's been talked about. I've had constituents call me up and say, why don't we have a splash pad in town? You know, and, and, you know, that might be brought before the parks and rec department. I mean, uh, the rec committee. You know, but that's something they can look at.
But again, this money, instead of losing, only getting half of it, we get all of it so that money can be put back in there. So when you do have those things come up, you can, you have the money again.
So Nevco has got relationships with big companies that we probably don't have. So Laurie goes out, let's just put this way.
Why are they asking her to submit who?
There's a difference between making a.
So AJ's, Pat's towing. So, so again, when you're asking for the donations, right? They may not appreciate Laurie in general, but Nevco is a larger company. So now, let's say Nevco can get dicks, cocks, cardings, stuff that we might not get. So ultimately, Laurie's gonna get the mom and pops that might only donate five hundred, a thousand, whatever it may be. And then, but Nevco will get the two thousand, the five thousand and whatever. So in the end, you're talking, we have two thousand dollars in donations and Nevco's got ten thousand dollars in donations. We're getting half of that, which is five thousand, and she's only still collecting a thousand. We're still doing much better by having Nevco have. Because they got people in place. They're, they're not a, they're not a mom and pop person that's gonna be able to. To get those, I mean, I can go out and solicit myself, but I'm not gonna get the same donations as a marketing company.
Where, where.
Never will.
It's a while ago, we talked about it. What other, what other towns, communities? What was, and just refresh my memory, what was the response from those communities? I know you.
They love it. They don't have a problem with it. They love.
They maintain them for the next five years?
So they maintain them?
I can answer it.
That's my issue is that, I didn't remember the amount and it's one of my questions on there is how much does the civic center owe the town? So is that eight hundred thousand the accurate amount?
It's in the ballpark, the whole big.
What's that? I'm not gonna take time to try and dig through if you have the number off top of your head. I appreciate it.
It's probably in that ballpark.
So I mean, that's, that's a decent amount of money that the taxpayers are sitting back waiting to be compensated on. And to me, this is giving away a chunk of money that we don't have to give away. And that's the way I'm looking at it.
We could be getting more advertisements from them and end up making more by those big advertisements too. I mean, there's no, there's no way to actually know one way or the other, I guess, just.
It's speculation on both sides.
Correct, correct.
We can speculate that they're gonna get the big ones, but can't guarantee it.
We could speculate that we will too or won't. I mean, it is speculation.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
I'm looking to do it in-house, so I think I'm gonna say no.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
That's a discussion for another night, though.
Just summer concerts. I have plenty of things that need.
Okay, that's enough, that's enough.
Um, number four, I would request that we take no action tonight, only because Mark sent an email right before the council, about an hour before the council meeting. So I would ask that, uh, Mark go through his notes over the next couple of weeks and figure out what's going on and then. Put it on the next agenda.
So what? I don't have an email from Mark.
I just sent it to you to request that we take no action.
Is that the one from, uh?
John Noblo.
John?
Right. They give me time to digest that since it just came in.
So we taking, voting to take no action or to table?
Saying I don't have Mark.
Yeah.
So that's why I didn't, I didn't know it. But again, you know, the, but this goes back to. Uh, what are we, where are we at in this one? Because I don't wanna say anything out of turn with the, this agenda item.
So I think it's the way you see that. You just go down and.
It's just his email. Mark sent me another, sent that other email out and sometimes it doesn't pop up on here. I was like. To, because that's what. The other one was on the ordinance. No, no, we'll talk about it.
Did you send us an email on this? No, only, only to David to ask that we take no action, because I haven't had time to digest the material that's in it yet.
You need to send it to David, though.
Did you get the email?
I, I do have it.
Did you get an email?
I did, yeah.
Alright.
So again.
If not, I would just go and make sure you're forwarding.
Information.
Alright, so should we, should we table or should we vote to table or to take no action?
No action, that's what.
Well, we wanna put it on the next agenda, so it'll just be put as a brand new item next.
Well, the gentleman sent the email there, all of us, so we have his email.
I haven't read that.
I haven't read, I haven't read any emails from twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
So.
And if, if I get an email past.
Yeah.
Four o'clock or three thirty, I'm probably not gonna get it before this council meeting, so. Um, because I, I, I personally work till five and by the time I get home, get ready. Do everything that I gotta do and get here for six. You know, it's one thing, I, I don't have a problem. We used to have council meetings at seven. We moved it to six. So it does get very difficult at times. And I'll keep it at six. I don't mind, but if something comes in between four and six, I can't, I, I'm not gonna read.
Right.
And a, a mile long email.
Vote to take no action.
All in favor for the next meeting?
Aye.
For the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Yeah, I can't wait on this.
If you're taking no action, you don't wanna vote.
No, we're not gonna vote on anything. It's just no action. Right.
Sorry.
Alright, um, so. Resolution joining with the town of Exeter and urging rejection of the changes to Rhode Island Enabling Act, Rhode Island General Law forty five dash twenty two dot point two. Forty five dash twenty three and forty five dash twenty four as proposed by the Rhode Island House Representative's Land Use Commission date November tenth, twenty twenty two.
I'd actually make a motion to table this as well, uh, as there is no legislation out there. Um, it hasn't been, it hasn't been.
But this is to stop the legislation because once it happens, you can't, it's so much harder to reverse it. That's the point of the resolution is to, that's why it's addressed to, please don't do this.
Well, but, but I, I don't think that putting a general, don't do this.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm opposed to this. Well, I, can I ask a question first? Can I ask a question about this first before I make a decision? So. So this is what Al has brought to us. Um, the issue is what Al has brought to us.
Resolution?
Yeah.
We're we're on hook discussion on table votes, so there's really no further discussion per se. Um, now maybe. Sorry, you guys.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, then then you know what? I'll rescind. I'll just I'll rescind the the motion to table it. And ask that. We discuss it. So.
So I need a motion to move.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Move in second.
I I just wanted to appear to you've had enough of information from me and the emails and what have you. But I did feel I have an obligation to report to you about the planning board last evening. I felt it was my obligation to the planning board while the resolution had all had been submitted to them. Based on the action of the council at the last meeting, asking that the resolution be put before you. To have the the planning board take action on the resolution that was going to come before you tonight. Uh, when I received the information, the town manager for the League of Cities and Towns. I felt it was my obligation to the planning board to inform them of that correspondence. And my response to the town manager, which you all received. So at that point in time, I asked the planning board to delay action. Because I felt, and I explained to them last night, that under normal circumstances. The planning board would make a recommendation to the council, but I felt in in this particular incident, the planning board would basically. Be putting 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 pressure or step going too far. In this particular thing, I felt the planning board should follow the council, not. Planning board tell the council what they believe it should do. So I asked that the planning board at their meeting discuss their opinions on what legal the land use committee. Had said. The general feeling that I got from the planning board last night was, in general. The planning board does not like what the land use commission has said. There was a general feeling that maybe in view of what the League of Cities and Towns has said. Maybe we should not move forward till we got more information. There was discussion on the planning board, no. But when us, we shouldn't be backing down because if we back down, this thing's going to be shoved down our throats. So we got to stand up and be heard. After all of the discussion, I think the the planning board general feeling was that. Uh. Maybe the League of Cities and Towns should be allowed to go forward and try to negotiate this. But I think the the main, this is my opinion, what I was getting, that they felt that. They asked me, how did I think the council was going to vote? I said, that's not my question. I said to the council, that's their decision. I said, but I I don't know. And they felt, well, if I couldn't advise them there, maybe they should let the council act before they did. I would like to take a little aside and say during the discussion, when we got into affordable housing. And I raised the issue that I raised a thousand times is why doesn't all of this legislation exempt us in the other nine? Communities that are exempt from affordable housing, at which point Josh Barrett spoke up. Blew off the subject. And he surprised me at what apparently an incredible job our housing authority is doing. In bringing forward much or much needed affordable housing for various groups, including even commented on veterans. In this discussion, Josh said, I really don't know how aware the council is. To what the housing authority is doing to take care of our needs in the affordable housing. Uh, situation. He said, I I would love to have the council know what we're doing. And I said, well, do you give me your permission tomorrow night when I'm making my presentation? To inform the council of your thoughts? He said, yes. And he made the suggestion was maybe the council would like to have. Somebody from the housing authority come before it. And he said, I don't know what the council knows. But to let the council and the public know, and I was impressed with what he had to say about what the housing authority is doing. So that's the the uh, planning board backed away from it. And as I said in my last response to uh, to the town manager, you all know my feelings, but it's your decision.
Any other inspection on that?
The resolution itself says the West Fork Town Council joins with the town of Exeter and urges the Honorable Speaker of the House and the Honorable General Assembly of the State of Rhode Island to reject. The legislative amendment suggested solutions, in quotes, recommended by the Land Use Commission Housing Working Group for the reasons herein stated. And be in be it further and it goes on. So it's. To make sure that the law doesn't pass. We wait till after it's passed. It's like taxes. How often do they get repealed? You know, it takes forever if if ever. We've had a seven percent sales tax, but it's only supposed to be what? Short period of time and we've got it for long. You know, once it's passed, it's done. This is the time to stab a strong stance and say, no, this is our town and we're going to control it the way we see. And not have these mandates, as I said in the last meeting, is at least six different mandates that they want to force on us. So it's either do it. We're going to make you do it. And it's just not right. It's the United States of America. We're supposed to have some type of freedom. We're supposed to have some type of independence. We're supposed to be able to run our communities the way we want to run our communities. Not everything dictated down from the federal government and the state government. It's just not the way it's supposed to be. But we keep letting it go a little further, a little further, a little further. And it's just good. It's. It's just getting to a point where we have to stand up and take a stand. But to me, I think we should pass this.
The the one thing Al brought up, and I'm not going to go deep into government like you are. But we are we are different. Every community is different. And when you really look at that, you know, in each town, it's different. You know, Ward, Ward five is so much different from from Ward one. You know, based on business community and what they offer and and um. You know, it's I'm I'm for everything you said made sense, you know, in the past three or four meetings you've come up.
One of my primary concerns, and I think unfortunately, a lot of the communities are very concerned with developers. Okay? I may be way off base. I am not concerned with developers because we just don't have that land in West Warwick for developers. To come in and create the problem. My concern, and I've been before you on this, on others, is we have a number of absentee landlords. That are already creating problems. And there's my concern with the we have. And old, we have a number of areas in this town that the residents are older residents. The, you know, I grew up near Prospect Hill and I and in no way am I not knocking Prospect Hill. But those houses were there before me, and that's a long time. And and they're the type of house that an absentee landlord can go in. We've already had our first application for a good size house. For the one car garage. They want to put a house, a family in a one car garage. There's where my concern is with that. Area of development. And what bothers me the most is why doesn't the legislation say West Warwick, you're exempt? This doesn't apply to you, but it hasn't. Ten communities.
And with the absentee landlord, we were just on the news as a town again because of an absentee landlord just situation. So I mean. So that's, you know, as I said.
So let me ask you a question. And like you said, everything's different. We are much different than Exeter financially.
Yes.
I don't like tying us to them, to be honest.
Exeter is per capita the richest town in the state of Rhode Island. Per capita.
Yeah.
Okay. And I understand they have a lot of land and a lot of development that can happen. We have a different issue. And so should we be going to our legislators?
Yes.
And saying, let's, when you guys bring this before and you want to support it, I'm fine. Exempt West Warwick. Exempt exempt whoever you 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 represent, but try to exempt West Warwick. Is that is that a way we want to go versus jumping on? And and listen, I I'm in the same boat as you guys. I I feel the same way. I don't need and I I feel I have the same feeling out of this, you know? I hate to see a house with ten tiny houses on it. And then all of a sudden, it's it's a giant little city there in the backyard of West Warwick. You know, I I don't want to see that.
So you're saying what some I have something drafted where it says West Warwick should be exempt for the reasons that Al has brought forth because we are.
You the whole point of I'm sorry.
No, I I I agree with what David said. We are far different from Exeter. Their their concerns are not our concerns. So so agreeing with that, given the fact that the League of Cities and Town has sent us something, they are also saying, we don't like it. We're not. We we're not for this. We want to keep local control in many cases. So I I don't like the idea of tying ourselves to Exeter. I think we have different things. And I don't know. I personally have not had conversations with our um representatives and senator up there. So I'm not sure and senators. Plural. Um. I think that's the way to go. Represent our concerns, what we we're worried about, not what Exodus worried about. There there are a number of things that do talk about mandates. But the fact is, the law has not been drafted. So we don't know what the law says. These were recommendations of a land use commission. The law has not been drafted. So how can we say we don't like it when we don't know what the law says?
Going on what because what the Exeter resolution says is based on the draft, these things are what's there. And instead of these things, they even gave alternatives that cover all the municipalities in the town. And even the city, we the cities and towns, when they sent out their memo, said we as as all thirty-nine uh, communities need to stand together. And that's what we should be doing. But they're behind the eight wall. Exodus got one out first, so they should be standing behind Exodus.
Yeah.
You know, instead of telling all these other communities to say, don't do Exodus, come to us. I don't agree with that. I think we should be. Exodus put it out there.
I think West Warwick should be West Warwick.
David. That's what should be West Warwick, and we should have the right to be West Warwick. And that's why if we all stand together and tell the state, you can't mandate to the communities anymore on all these different things. Then what we West Warwick can be West Warwick.
And that's what the League of Cities and Towns is saying. Let's all stand together, not Exodus and eight other communities that are.
But see, that's why Exodus sent us out to all the other communities saying, stand with us. And I think we should stand with them. Because they gave alternatives there that covers all the different communities to have their own say in their own government and in their own communities.
Would a compromise if I mean. I agree with both of you. I just.
Yeah.
I I agree with both of you. I just, I think if if we drafted our own verbiage of of West Warwick, we'd still be standing with them and agreeing that each town should be treated different. I mean.
But it's already written. Why rewrite it?
Because I don't. I don't necessarily agree with everything that's in there. But but I've had a number of conversations since then. And and I, you know, the more information you get, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
We should be West Warwick. However, but if we're West Warwick, if ten people agree and they all stand divided for different reasons.
You fail.
Then, yeah, you looked at it. It's like people showing up to a meeting. You have you have one one person show up with a neighborhood complaint. They're going to be dismissed. You know, I don't care if it's the council, the planning board, the zoning board, doesn't matter. They're going to be dismissed. When you have a neighborhood show up in most cases with concerns. It's going to be looked at it a little bit differently.
Oh, when a neighborhood shows up. You know, my neighbor on the right side might have this concern and the one on the left may have a concern.
But they will share a concern regarding the issue.
Right. But I think I think we're really on. We're really close to the same page than than. We do. We all share the same concern, but your concern may be the noise. The next neighbor's concern may be the light. The next maybe be concerned of extra traffic that's coming in. So it's still the same concern.
Regarding the issue.
Same issue. So I we're really.
That's why I'm forced to.
If I if I might follow up with David's comment about saying exempt West Warwick. What bothers me is that. And I'll read. This is from the Housing and Community Development. Low and moderate housing income homes by community. The Rhode Island Comprehensive Housing Production and Rehabilitation Act of two thousand and four. And the Rhode Island Low and Moderate Income Housing Act, Rhode Island General Laws forty-five dash fifty-three. General requires that ten percent of each municipality's housing stock be quote affordable. A total of twenty-nine communities are covered by this act. Ten are exempt due to the percentage of rental housing and slash or current affordable housing inventory. Open quote affordable units are required to have a subsidy state local with restrictions to ensure they will remain affordable for a minimum of thirty years. It then says exempt communities, Central Falls, Cranston, East Providence, Newport, North Providence, Pawtucket, Providence, Warwick, West Warwick, Wunsager. What bothers me is if you've got this saying, you're exempt. And then you're drafting a statute that totally ignores that exemption. That's that's the main reason I am so concerned about this.
And and if we were to join forces, I would think it would be with those communities.
As far as what whether you move forward or table.
No, I I understand that.
You tell me what to do, I'll do it. But I'm just telling you why I am so opposed to what. Not not what you do tonight, but what the land use commission is suggesting.
When is this expected to be heard? Because you said that this is this is not.
It's it's not even drafted.
Not even drafted.
No. No.
And had any other community other than Exodus at this last time you said that you didn't know?
I believe Hopkinton has taken a milder vision to stand, but they're they've said, don't go forward with it. And I think there was one other community that also has, I think a cou- a couple have come out. Not necessarily in the same vein as Exodus.
So you're saying that there's been three, three different communities that kind of had their own version of of a similar sentiment?
I thought what he was saying is they followed Exodus.
Yeah, I think there were other communities that already signed on with Exodus.
Well, that's why I want clarification here because I mean, that makes a difference.
Marilyn gave me a.
And what's the town planner? You've had a conversation with her? And what are the what are the town planners saying? Do you know? Do you have any?
The town of Forster has a resolution. A resolution of Forster urging rejection of changes to the Rhode Island Enabling Act as proposed by the uh, House of Lords Land Use Commission. And they go on and they uh, they just say they're opposed.
You know how many other communities have attached themselves to the Exodus resolution?
No, I don't. I I don't know whether anybody has. I know that Marilyn was at a meeting this morning and on the on the computer. I'm not sure who it was, other than it was a group of planners. And they were taking much the similar stand as the League of Cities and Towns. Their concern was that if we stand up and. You you unified say, we don't want this, they're just going to say, fine, we'll do it. What I got to listen to you, we're going to do it on our own anyway.
At least you stood up, though. That's my thing. At least you stand up. Well, if you sit back and just take a beating all the time.
I'm just here.
To me, you you.
Mark, I'm just here.
I'm just telling you that's.
I'm delivering what. I'm tired of, you know. Information for you people to make the decision.
I think we're on the same page that we want to stand up. I think it's just we have. Just how we want to stand up and what we want to say. I think that's the only discussion, right? I think we're all on the same. That we want to stand up. I think we're just where we're disagreeing is where we're not sure what we want to say. That's correct, right? Then we're.
I believe that's correct.
I mean, that that's factual. We're but we're not on the same page, what we want to say.
For, yes, again.
Last meeting, we all fired with on the same page. That's all.
But again, but.
But if this if this resolution would have been there at the last meeting, it would have passed because everybody was on the same page. Everybody was like, why didn't we have a resolution prepared for this? Did we vote on it tonight? That's what people were saying at the last meeting. And it would have passed. But tonight, I don't think it's going to pass. I think it's going to be a three-two vote, like most things.
Can we vote? House President?
I.
Do you have a comment? I mean, I know there's people waiting.
Sorry.
Old Villa fifteen, Hannah Drive, West Warwick, also a planning board open it. Um. I I would use a different terminology than backing down on the planning board last night. The planning board did not back down. They just didn't know where the council was going to go with it. So they didn't want to pass it and then have it shot down in this venue. That's my take on it. And Al may have a different take, but that's my take.
So they didn't want to pass it and then have it shot down in this venue. That's my take on it. And Al may have a different take, but that's my take on it. And this seems to be the new talking point this week. Because I heard this at the, at the Planning Board meeting last night that we're different than Exodus. And there's no question, every city in town is different. But the, the causation of this legislation is going to be to put a central seat at the state level. That is going to dictate to every city and town in this state, what they can build, what they, where they can build it, how they can build it. Without regard to any zoning or planning boards, okay? Um, so that's the bottom line here. It has nothing to do with Exodus having five acre minimums and and West Warwick having ten foot minimums. It has to do with who's going to be making the decisions for the cities and towns in this state. And the state in its infinite wisdom always passes it down to cities and towns because when, and I said this at the last council meeting. When we're inundated with the ten by sixteen sheds put up by absentee landlords. You know, the, the leagues and cities and towns, it's nice, they're going to try and negotiate something that is feasible for the cities and towns. However, my question is, where were they and where were our legislators when they passed the ADUs? In the last session. By the way, they passed ADUs without, and I haven't seen any language relating to sanitary sewers. Clean water or anything else that these things have to have. Um, and and that's another issue I have because we have our affordable housing, as Al said, we've been exempt for many years. Um, no question, West Warwick Housing Authority, I a hundred percent, they do a great job. All the manners in town do a great job, uh the housing authorities, uh keeping their residents safe, healthy, clean environments. The absentee landlords, not so much, okay? Um, and I can say this from thirties of experience, you want to know how the conditions of. Some of these absentee properties are in town, talk to the police officers and firefighters, they'll tell you what, what kind of conditions they're in. These people, affordable housing is important. These people deserve to live in safe and healthy environments. They don't belong living in in slum houses where linoleum is missing on the floor, bare wires around the walls, paint is peeling. Um, whatever, and right, cockroaches, rats, the whole bit. And and and, you know, those landlords living in these other communities, that, you know, every, every month their bank account gets hit with a, with a check. From whoever paying the subsidized rent and they don't do any uh upgrade on these properties. And when I, when I beat Al up all the time, a- and I say, well, why aren't we bringing these property owners to municipal court? Why aren't we putting fines on the property? He tells me we do. But what happens is they just ignore them because apparently. I mean, I was always in, in a, in a realm where I had alternatives. But apparently, when you, when you put fines on these absentee landlords that have rundown properties, they can just say, I'm not going to pay them.
No, and so, and sometimes, and I've had conversations with people this week, sometimes even when you do and you put the lien in their house.
You can't foreclose.
And, well, you have, you have, yeah, because you have no, and it's, it's a conversation that I, I want to have a deeper conversation on what you're talking about. No, because, because we, we get to a point where we have no more teeth and it's very frustrating where we can't, even though. It looks like, well, how come the council's not doing more? The minimum housing is not doing more, we don't have teeth to do.
So my, my point to this is, we're talking leagues and cities and towns, so while we got them on the phone on this. Why don't we tell them on the phone, why don't you introduce legislation at the state level?
Yeah.
To put some teeth in the zoning laws, in the minimum housing laws. So why, when our people write fines and you don't want to do anything with them, we can foreclose on the properties. You know, maybe we'd have a new building where there's post offices by now if we didn't have it since two thousand six with no windows, that, that being said. But that's what I'm saying, so while we got them on the phone, why, why don't the leagues and cities and towns introduce some legislation like that? Because in affordable housing, these people don't belong living like that, all right? I, I understand they don't belong in the street either, but they don't belong.
Because there's the sentiment is, we're going to add more affordable housing, so people, places to live, but then you're going to end up with another problem later. Is that these places are going to be.
And you know, what happened to, is section eight has become synonymous with, there's a lot of different kind of section eights. The, the section eights at the manors work fine. The, the buildings are professionally managed and all that stuff, but section eight has become synonymous with. Landlords that are putting these people in these buildings and, and you know, so let's not get clouded by what the underlying issue is here. The underlying issue is, they don't want zoning and planning boards at local levels to be making these decisions. You know, if, if you want to put a Conex container in your driveway, they want to make the decision if you can do that. Right? And, and another problem some area with this and why we got to watch this very closely. And I think we should be on record at some kind of level, whether we want to have our own little thing or we want to go along with Exodus. To tell our delegates up front that, look, you shouldn't be supporting this. We have, number one, we have our affordable housing. Uh, stock that we need to have, we're exempt from this. Number, number two is, you know, if, if they go to committee and a committee shoots it down. Well, now we found out in the last session, we can just circumvent the committee. And we can just go bring things to a floor vote and we can violate rights and we can do everything we want up there apparently. So this is the problem we're having here, so we don't want to be here in June at the end of the session saying, geez, we should have, we could have, we would have. But guess what? Now we can just get rid of our planning board and our zoning board because we don't need it anymore. Okay, that's all I have to say.
My question, whi- which, and, and I'm kind of torn, which voice do you think carries the most weight? Is it, is it joining on to this or is it drafting something of our own? Which one do you think they're going to hear louder or do you think they're not going to listen to either one?
I, I have no idea. I don't know what goes on up there.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's my only question.
Anything I say is going to be fairly prejudiced.
Before we move on, I just want to point out one thing, going forward tonight. I've let two people come up for resolutions. One was a planning board member and one was a president, rec uh chairman. So going forward, keep everything else set for public comment.
Well, just one last comment, just on what he said about the problem with Oz. There is one email that every time I get it, I dread calling Bob Assleman back. And that's Al, the conditions are so bad, I can't let them live there. What do I do?
Condemn it.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have to answer that question. Build an official paper, condemn it.
Building official likes to get, to, to protect himself, but I don't blame him. That's what he, they need to do.
That's what you're going to, you have two awful decisions to make and I've, and I've had conversations with certain constituents, it's, it's, we have two choices here. You're, you're, you're either going to be homeless or you're going to live in like some filth and they're both awful decisions. Because some of these people, the rent they're paying is not small amounts of rent. Some of these people are paying crazy amounts to live in. A step up from being homeless and without the heat and with bugs and and rats, there's really, there's really not that much difference between some of these places.
Saying to Bob, put them out, it's a landlord's problem.
No, it, it's, it is a very tough decision. Save it, save it for the.
We're talking about the topic that was.
Yeah, uh, uh, that's, I don't want to go too deep in the weeds, that, that landlord has a bunch of places, so it's.
Talking about landlords, you're going to put us on a real deep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's.
Talking addresses, landlords.
Any other comment from the council? Any questions for Al? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jake?
I'm for supporting Exodus.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
No.
No vote, yes.
Resolution amending Resolution twenty thirteen dash one eighty and twenty sixteen uh dash one thirty-seven fees and charges.
I ask that be tabled. That's the gas station, service station license.
Tabling this to the next meeting?
Take no action.
Take no action?
Because that, that can come, especially because we will probably be adding other types of businesses and.
Sorry, no vote to take no action, just take no action, sorry.
All right, resolution authorizing the remedial closure documentation project, project for Forty Factory Street Youth Center to Fussin O'Neil.
Move the resolution.
Council, the, there is the closing procedure um when the youth center was built. That was never properly completed and submitted to DM. So I received a letter from them looking for it. I've searched through all our documentation, uh reached out to engineers, construction companies. Um, and nobody can prove that it happened. So I'm looking to satisfy the DM closer report and get that project completed. Um, so the cost to do that is estimated to be twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars and Fussin O'Neil. Will handle the samplings, the proper soil samplings and the closure report submitted to DM.
Any questions for Mark? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, I have it.
Resolution authorizing bid award for consultant services for an update to the town of West Warwick Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Yeah, and the resolution from you has one typo that I corrected with Sarah, but we're required to do an update to our hazard mitigation plan. Um, Marilyn, our planner, has submitted a grant to, through FEMA and Rhode Island EMA. And the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, the total cost of this project that was put out to bid is twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty. So we're seeking permission to award that bid to Weston and Sampson of Reading, Mass in that amount. Um, with that anticipated funding source being the grant with the three thousand in-kind contribution. That the planner has put in her FY twenty-four budget.
Can you say the last part again? I'm sorry, I was reading it, Mr.
So the anticipated funding source for that amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, twenty-five thousand. Is anticipated from a grant application through FEMA and Rhode Island EMA. With the approximate three thousand cash in-kind contribution that the planner has put in her fiscal twenty-four budget request.
Thank you, sorry about that, no problem.
As opposed to in-king, you mean?
Correct.
Any other questions for Mark? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, I have it.
Approval of agreement with Permidium LLC for online but all records request application. This is actually something that I put on the agenda tonight. Um, I had a demo from a vendor that other communities are also starting to utilize. That would basically just give um residents or even people who, you know, lived here when they were married or born. Um, to get their vital records online or order them online at least. We'd still be doing all the same stuff that would just give them the option. Now, if someone who lives in Florida who got married here, they have to send us the application with a copy of their driver's license. They have to send it in the mail, we have to send it back.
Putting it into the twenty-first century.
Where, yes, basically, we're giving them the capability of doing all that online and then we would just mail it out immediately. So we'd cut down on the time that they need. It'd be no cost to us. Um, they would be paying extra to this company, Permidium, for the service. Um, so really, it's, it's a win-win for us.
And people could still, if they live in town, walk in the door and.
Absolutely, nothing that we're doing now would change. Um, this would just add another layer.
And if you live in town, you could still do it online.
Absolutely, you could, yep. Um, yeah, I would need you guys to approve.
I'm going to, I'm going to move, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Move a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, I have it.
Thank you.
Uh, request from West Warwick High School Drama Club for sponsorship.
Move approval of the request.
Second.
Move a second, any discussion?
Which one we going with?
We typically do the one hundred. So, yeah, so uh move approval of a one hundred dollar full-page ad.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Opposed, I have it.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Board Review Appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer Use Board Review Appointment to fill vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Board of Assessment and Review Appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Board of Assessment and Review Appointment or Reappointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. West Warwick Housing Authority Appointment or Reappointment for five-year term expiring November twenty twenty-seven. West Warwick Public Library Board of Trustees Appointment or Reappointment for three-year term. Public.
Public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Tom Moat, Sixth Colonial Way. I have two items and. One of them has been brought up quite a few times and there's no action. And it's, we talked about ordinances with no teeth. Murray Square, we all know Murray Square where the FOP is. There's a fire hydrant in Murray Square. There's always a vehicle that's parked anywhere from ten. To twenty-four inches away from that hydrant. You will never get a line drop going south on Main. Anything happens in that direction, they're going to have to make a big U-turn with a hose through the square to fight any fire issue. There's, they just won't do anything about parking right on top of that hydrant. Jason, in your ward, um Rice Street.
He's not there.
Pulaski Street, you know, Rice goes down the hill. Rice is now a one-way street. The side of Pulaski Street at Rice is no parking. We still park there. We park our cars on Pulaski Street under the no parking sign, both directions. Way past the sidewalk, Rice Street, they park right up against it with the back bumper on Pulaski Street. And at the, the corner. Our chief will never get any emergency vehicle around that corner. Coming in from Remington where Breds and Stuff is, both sides of the street, always cars parked up on the side. And even with cars both sides on the sidewalk, you have trouble getting an automobile. Forget an ambulance or a fire truck down there. All over the town, we have issues with people just accustomed to parking on the sidewalk. Brookside Avenue is another mess. There's a gentleman in a wheelchair. You see him going up and down Brookside Avenue in the middle of the road because cars are always parked. Pawtucket Terrace, the, 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 the West Warwick Avenue end, there's always from West Warwick Avenue up. On the eastally side, there's always fifteen cars all the way up, parked on the side. There's, there's no need, there's more than enough room. Right, there's more than enough room, it's wide enough. We have construction vehicles uh on Pulaski Street, come down from our house, over the bridge, up the hill on the right. They all, they're paving and whatever kind of construct, they're all parked, all willy-nilly on the pavement, in the dirt. Because there's no sidewalk, it's all gone and caved in. It, it's just a mess. Uh, and I understand it's an old town, Mill Village, we don't have, so, some of our streets are not very wide at all. Uh, but there just seems to be a problem and I hate to see a catastrophe like a fire in one of those areas that I mentioned. That people just don't care. They park there. That's.
So many sense, I, I just see the town manager, I know he's writing this stuff down, so he'll probably follow up with the proper department and.
I, I, I know it's a difficult thing, you know, people don't have big driveways and, you know, everybody seems to have two cars now. Or three cars and their families and, and I understand it's a problem because it's an old town. But we have to start paying attention to where it's a danger.
And some streets, I understand that it's probably a balance of, is it safer to have it on the sidewalk or my car could get smashed? Pawtucket Terrace is not one. I do know that the police department has been out at night and they have been giving parking tickets in certain areas. I know a few people that have gotten them, not necessarily parking on the sidewalk, but I know that they've been out there.
That, well, that's good, because you, 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 you see it, especially in our neighborhood. It's, it's, it's tough and, and it's not only the Crompton section. I see it in Arctic, I see it in Phoenix. It's, it's an old town. Second issue, uh, executive session this evening. We have item two, Thirty Payant Street. Uh, this property, two and a half acres of property does not belong to the town council. It belongs to the citizens, the taxpayers, the youth of this community. Well, I, I don't understand why it's on uh executive session. I would think that this would be an open session with the taxpayers and the community. Thank you.
I assume it has to do with us discussing what we might accept for price and we certainly wouldn't want that out in the public.
If, if that's the only discussion, that, that, that would be understandable. Thank you for clarifying that.
It is public property negotiation tactics.
Correct. That's correct. So we don't want to give, yes.
Yeah, I just hope when this all comes out, uh, I had handed out, I believe, a year ago to the council, the uh. The, it's not, what is it, the, the assessment, that, that they had the new tax. the, it's not, what is it, the, the assessment, that, that they had the new tax, is that what they, yeah, yeah, tax assessment? I'd handed out, and they had the price for the property and for the real estate, for the building, and joint together what that was worth. And I hope that's gonna be taken into consideration when we have the negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your great success, Jim. I just wanna touch on what we were talking about with those scoreboards. Something that just came to me sitting back there as I was fuming a little bit, is the comment was made that there could be forty, there could be fifty, there could be sixty thousand dollars in electrical work. In my opinion, if, now, electric's no joke, and I'm steel building. If the, if the electrical system isn't that much to red, I wouldn't even have that building open. If you got forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of electrical work needs to be done, that's a lot of electrical work in a steel building. Do we agree? Now, there's a conductor of electricity.
So is ice.
So is ice. I think that's concerning. You know, that's, that's just my opinion.
I, I don't think anybody knew what there was work. I think we were just throwing out numbers. I don't think.
You can throw out numbers, throw out your numbers. Forty or fifty thousand is a lot of electric.
I, did I say four? I just said if.
No, I'm not saying you do.
No, it wasn't you.
Wasn't you.
No.
All right.
I'm just saying, if that number's gonna be you, that's a lot of electric. It takes one, one wire to touch that steel beam, and that whole building's alive. So this.
That could be rated electric, too.
It could be, but all I'm saying is, if there's that much electrical problems, there's a major problem.
Let's hope there's not.
And then number two is, we're gonna go into executive session, but we don't have a solicitor. She's not on the contract. She's not part of the firm.
The.
Can't be.
You don't need a solicitor, even going to.
Yeah, we don't need one.
And I guess she can go home with us.
The, the, the way the contract is written is that he can designate somebody, just has.
He can designate, is it in the writing?
Yes, it is. It's in the contract. He just has to call and notify the manager and the town council president. I think it's like an hour before the meeting that somebody's gonna be sitting in his place. That's the way the contract's written, because we had, I looked into that before.
All right.
For the record.
I phoned Paul. I was informed at twelve oh nine PM.
My name's Tara Fontaine. Thank you.
You're welcome, and you work under Tim Williamson.
Any other public comment? Motion to move into executive.
Make a motion to move into executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.